To call the meeting to order at three o'clock. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Can I have a call, please?
Heather Owen?
Here.
Annette Bueste?
Here.
John McPherson?
Here.
Virginia Mendoza? Jaime Fernandez?
Here.
Mary Claypool?
Present.
Sandra Ocampo?
Hi.
Dr. Janine?
Here.
All right, so we're going to do the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Keller, would you like to return?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the agenda?
In motion.
Oh, sorry.
So moved to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay, motion passed. And we're on to communications, 2.1. Do we have any correspondence?
Yes, the correspondence you all have in your packets. And that is a request, of course, I didn't keep the correspondence. But it is a request for Juan Martinez's memorial scholarship. Juan used to represent the South County area of our county on the Hartnell College Board. And it looks like he has passed away. And they have a memorial scholarship in his honor and they...
Oral comments from the public, anything that is not related to an agenda item. Okay, seeing none, we'll get on to item three with the consent agendas. Yes, motion to approve?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're seeing none, we adopted consent agenda. And we are on the item four. 4.1, staff recognition, MCOE main employees of the month for Mark and April, Dr. Guss.
Yes, so it gives me great pleasure to ask Adam Duvalla, our chief technology officer, to come up to the podium. Infrastructure that may have been put in many, many years ago and it's not actually doing what it needs to be doing. This is the amazing team that goes in, pulls it out, fixes it, makes it work. And they are just rock stars. We get so many positive emails from districts saying, thank you, thank you, like, what would we have ever done without this amazing team? And I know that all of our MCOE team members that are here in the room and outside of the room, they all feel the exact same way. So we, I want to turn it over to Adam to say a few words, but we are recognizing Frank and Raj this month, or sorry, month of March, for our employees of the month. So Adam, would you like to add to that?
We're missing one member, Jonathan Schneider could make it.
Yeah.
These three guys are the backbone of our entire research. Back in February, we underwent penetration testing by the federal government to see how secure we were. And we blew it out of the water, it was pretty amazing. I would personally establish the Halloween. So they recommended us for the next tier of attack. Unfortunately, that group was disbanded, so we'll see what happens. But anyway, without them, we will be a much worse place. I'd just like to say thank you to our team, you know, Adam, and the support from, you know, getting Gus. Companies in school districts and providing good service to, that's the ultimate goal for us. And it's just a great pleasure to do so. And if you get a real good kick, we'd actually get out and see for ten, you know, our efforts. Thank you.
Prepare a small note.
Good afternoon, everyone. I want to sincerely thank the IT team, the leadership team, and the cabinet for this wonderful recognition. I'm honored and honored to receive this employee of the month award and I am sure thankful to be able to do it equally proud and grateful. Achievements like this are fully a reflection of our collective effort. None of these will be possible without the support of collaboration and dedication of our entire community. Personally, this recognition holds a special meaning for me. I've been fortunate to be part of the MCOE for all years. And during that time, I have been privileged to receive acknowledgement in the role of multiple officials, including previous employee of the month and employee of the year awards. Yet, I must say that in my 25 years, 19, this award today stands out as my prestigious and meaningful accomplishment. It especially validates the years I have dedicated to learning, growing, and contributing to this cybersecurity. This recognition is especially significant because it is not just internal acknowledgement, but also validation from external entities affirming our organization's position in the top 10% of cybersecurity devices. This is my story is a testament to the strength and effectiveness of our collective commitment. Once again, thank you very much, and I deeply appreciate it.
I just want to have one more thing. So Adam and I have this thing where if it's nights or weekends and I get a call from Adam, you already know what's on my mind. Oh, no, there's been a cybersecurity breach. I just, you know, because that's when it happens, right? So when Adam called to let me know that the CISA cybersecurity assessment was so great, it was a night or a weekend or something, and he calls. I'm like, no, no, Adam, he goes, no, I'm calling to tell you we passed with flying colors. It's just like the most glorious day ever. Because many of you in the audience may not know this, but we have had multiple cyber attacks here in our county. You might recall, it was not that long ago, it was Hartnell College. We had another school district in our county that also got attacked. But when they get attacked, even though it's not us being attacked, it is still us because they come through our system. But the way that they have structured our infrastructure, even if somebody else gets attacked, there's multiple redundancies. Or I'm not probably using the correct IT terms, but ways that it doesn't poison or let the ransomware person get into all of the spaces that they shouldn't be in. And so anyway, in order to make that happen, these gentlemen put in so many hours behind the scenes you cannot even imagine. And they find every weakness in our system before anyone else can find it. And so it really is that big of a deal. If we get hacked, we're talking millions and millions of dollars or, you know, even it's not even about the finances, it's also about people's personal identifiable information, things like that. So it's that important that we have everything in place that we do so that we never, ever, ever get hacked. So one last time, thank you so much for passing that test with flying colors, we're so very proud of you. Let's give them one more round of applause.
We also have with us, oh, sorry. Any other comments from the board?
Well, just, yeah. Thank you very much. This is one of those things, it's like insurance, you don't think, you don't know you need it until you need it. And I am the private sector, we're one of the grower shippers. We had one of these attacks and it just grinds everything to a halt. And so the effort is necessary and very well received.
Madam Chair, I'd just like to echo some of yours words by saying, we were not too far ago, one of our neighbor's districts, which is, I believe, if I'm not quote wrong, Gonzalez, was skip with this year. And, but it was cut on a timing. And so that goes to, you know, we need to become not after active, but proactive, if you want to do. And I will invite every school district to really dig down that information about implementing, if they don't have it, or coming to the MCOE and talk to our superintendent in regards to what we can do to prevent any hazard, any cyber attacks. You know, that it takes away our confidential information in regards to teachers, students, and actually the whole community. So with that in mind, I congratulate all the team that worked hard. And whenever you get a sense of feeling something that is happening within other school sites, yes, no, you know, send us info. And if there's something that we need to start working on for the future, let's start doing it. And don't regret. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other comments? Yes, Mary?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for the support you provide to us as board members. Because sometimes we call and we need that support and you're right there helping us out. So thank you so much for that.
Any other comments?
I want to thank you for all your help with me getting a laptop and helping me to set it up so I can work from home and be able to do it fast. Thank you for your help. And thank you to all the other members, because they are a team. Yeah, they went to help. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, well, thank you so much for everything you do for the office.
Our April employees of the month. So this month, we're catching up, we're doing March and April. So first, we're going to start with Evangelina Perez. And I'm going to ask Ephraim, Angelina, and Dr. Vella to, all three come to the podium. And you just have to know, we have the amazing migrant program that we have. Because of our team members and their dedication, their willingness to get up, what is it, like four o'clock in the morning sometimes? Maybe even earlier to get out to the fields where we're well-refined our families and help connect them to resources. And it's this team that makes that happen. So many young people come to, and transitional youth as well, they come to our country, they don't even know that these services are available to them until we find them. They don't, you know, Nancy, my predecessor, used to say something about the Maytag repairman, like, oh, you have a problem, come see us. Well, if people don't even know what you do, they can't come see you and they're not going to come see you. You have to meet them where they are at the time they're there. And so while most people don't want to get up at the crack of dawn to be out there doing their job and bringing the energy on, our team does, they're amazing. And we are just so very fortunate to get to recognize Evangelina today. And so I want to give Ephraim and Dr. Vella an opportunity to tell you more about this amazing individual.
Yes, good afternoon, board members. It's my pleasure here to introduce to you Evangelina Perez. And she is currently the Identification and Recruitment liaison two for the migrant program. And I just wanted to share with you one of her accomplishments, because I don't think she is gonna tell you, right? She's very, very humble, but I do want to highlight this particular accomplishment because she joined the program in around 2021 or so. And, you know, when she got to, to us and she's, she's working right now at Salinas Union High School District, that's where her office is, and she's designated to that, to that district. The numbers, according to our data, in that year, were, were student number for identified migratory students was 651. So you're talking about five years ago, right? The current numbers shown on our student database is 1,200 students identified in that number. So we went from, you know, having 600 students to having a lot more, right? So there's an 88 percentage increase in identified students. We know that our migratory families here in this area, that's where we have the most migratory students in Monterey County. We have our South District, one being one of the largest districts, and then Salinas Union High School District. When our families are there, but if they're not identified, right, we won't be able to serve them. So this is where Evangelina has really, really made a difference, not only in our program, but also at the district where she... in our program, but also at the district where she is designated at, and also in the end, our family. So I just wanted to highlight that. And then, of course, I'll let Dr. Vella or Evangelina, if they want to add a little bit more. But again, thank you. And it's my pleasure to work with Evangelina.
Can I add a few words?
Yes.
If your board members, Dr. Gus, good afternoon, members of the community, if I could just add a few sentences about Eva, because I've had the honor of working with her, and also to add that her impact on the program goes a little beyond what Ephraim is working or has mentioned. Eva previously worked in Gonzalez and really established herself there as the migrant support person. I've heard countless stories of the difference that you've made in people's lives there, Eva, countless stories. And so we are absolutely honored to now have you on the MCOE team, working at a Salinas Union High School District, but on my behalf and the rest of Student Services, congratulations. This is a great honor, and we're very proud of you. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everybody. This was a very rewarding award. Sometimes I am the first or second person that comes in contact with many of our families that have just arrived to the Monterey County. And it's very rewarding to hear their stories. I have short time to hear their stories, but as they're telling me their story, I'm already thinking the resources that we, so many resources that we offer in this county, which is amazing and impacts our students. My main goal is to find resources for those families, but at the same time to, for them to continue, for the students to continue their education, and hopefully they attend a college, university, or a training school. And that's one of my main goals, to target those families as soon as they arrive, so that we could defer them to different agencies. But thank you. And thank you for my staff, my coworkers, and thank you, Ephraim, for giving me this award, and also for always having an opportunity for me to come and talk to him when I need his support. Thank you, everyone.
Any comments from the board?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I should really share with you, Evangelina, that coming from the migrant perspective point of view, I had several experiences where my husband, Robert Campo, got hired to become a high school counselor in migrant education in the eighties in Aliso High School. And I remember he's fluent in bilingual, but in those days, Spanish was like kind of a broken, and my English was even more broken, even worse than Spanish. So sometimes he would ask me to accompany him to go to the migrant camps and convince those parents, okay, to allow those high school students, from graders, off to colleges or universities. And typically culturally, you know, being migrant workers' parents, you want your kid to go to work in McDonald's and so forth. And they were struggling with that decision. But I don't give the whole credit by speaking Spanish to the parents, but I did convince them. And so it was a beautiful experience to send those kids off to colleges and help them. And being my husband, high school counselor in migrant education before, I don't remember how long he was there, maybe fifteen years, and then he turned into the other level. But it's beautiful to work with migrant people. They really, really are humble people. And once you establish your trust among the family, they're all yours, baby. So I congratulate you. And from six hundred students to twelve hundred plus students, my goodness gracious, you're working overtime. So thank you once again.
Any other comments? All right. Well, thank you so much for your service. We really appreciate it. Thanks for being with our families. It's very important. And now we have our next Employee of the Month, and that is Rosie. I see you somewhere behind the podium. We have Rosie Sanchez here, and we have Dr. Vella, who's also going to come up and speak, but I get to speak first, Rosie. Come to the podium while we talk about you, please. This amazing individual keeps our Head Start program in very good order, or I should say, our early learning program, because we blend and braid our Head Start and our California State preschool funding. So that's why we call it our early learning program. And as you know, the program has gone through some transition this year. We've had some changes, some challenges, and our, our early learning program team, we have a lot of the team members here in the room. And so I just, we're here right at this moment to congratulate Rosie. But I also just want to congratulate this entire early learning program team, because no matter what the challenge is, they rise to the occasion. They always put the children and families first. And I just, from the bottom of my heart, I am so grateful to all of you. I know how hard your job is. I know that the other struggle is trying to get parity with salaries. That is always such a challenge. And just so our board knows, and the rest of the community knows, I should, that those two programs, state preschool and Head Start, they don't have the best funding mechanisms, which makes it very challenging to keep our early learning program people in place. Because what happens is, the Head Start program asks them to get their BA degree. And if you get your BA degree, the thinking is, well, you might as well go into the K, or I should say, TK to twelve world, where the salaries are so much higher. And so frequently, we lose our early learning program people to the K-12 world because of the requirements and kind of how the pathways work. Our team is amazing. They have not left us to go to the TK, or to the K-12 world. They have stayed with us because they are so dedicated to our kids and to our families. And I just wish that we had a better funding mechanism for both of those programs, because you deserve so, so much more. And I don't get a chance to publicly tell you that frequently. So I wanted to take a moment to say that. Now, I want to come back to Rosie. So I get to interact with Rosie at the parent policy council meetings. And as you can imagine, everybody's worked all day, and then you come out to the parent policy council meeting that happens at night, and then you go another, I have sometimes three, four hours, depending on how long the meeting is. Rosie does it with a smile. The entire team does. But Rosie is definitely the one who's greeting them at the door as they're arriving, making sure that all their needs are met, making sure the questions are answered, and so much more. And so Rosie, we just want you to know, we so much appreciate that positive attitude, the energy you bring to your work, and the relationships that you have built with our families. So thank you. And I know Dr. Vella would also like to add on to that.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Gus. Once again, President Owen, members of the board, community. When I think of Rosie Sanchez, I think of tireless commitment. When I first began working with Rosie, the staff would say, Rosie can give you information on that. Or I have a certain question, curiosity, Rosie can probably answer that. And there are several people in our department, and definitely Rosie is one of those that has such a vast institutional knowledge of our program, but has also served in pretty much every role, from being an assistant teacher, to a teacher, to a site supervisor, site manager, and now coordinator. And so when we have the honor to work with people that understand the full program and be that wise person at the program, it's such an honor for us to learn from you, Rosie. And, and not once has she ever said, no, I don't have that, or that's not my job. She's so reliable, and I want to appreciate you for that, Rosie. The other thing I think about Rosie is that she is a constant supporter of the families and always brings up, how is this going to impact students? How is this going to? And in a leadership role, like the, when you have Rosie and all of our team, we need that voice that always keeps us grounded on what our objective and mission of the program is. And Rosie is a consummate professional advocate for families, and that's what I appreciate you for, Rosie, as well. You're so deserving of this award and this recognition. You've worked with our program for so many years, and we hope to have you a few more. But congratulations, Rosie. On behalf of our entire team, that a lot of us are here, we're very, very proud of you, Rosie. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. I feel really honored. And the credit is not for me. I really need to recognize every single employee here, my colleagues, to them. This is a recognition for them, not only for me. So thank you so much for your time. I'm now more inspired to continue doing this collaboration and working and benefit of our children and families in the progress. Thank you. Thank you. It's good to have you.
One last, oh, wait, sorry. Comments from the board?
Well, you know, I, I go to, for like thirteen, fourteen years, I've been to a lot of state functions with other county board members. And I always say, I always brag, we've got the best county office. And it's because of the staff throughout the programs. And Rosie, you're, you're a perfect example of that. We have a great program, and we have a great program because we have great, talented, dedicated people running the program. So, thank you.
I'd also like to echo by saying, Rosie, you've been recognized today, and I'm glad that you bring in your buddy, your family with you, because we cannot do it ourselves. We need a team.
Yes.
And I'm proud to have you on MCOE as a team. So congratulations to you. And hopefully you don't stay with us two more years, or more than two more years. Keep that inspiration, la pasión, la inspiración, the love. Thank you.
Any other comments? What about another twenty years? All right. Any other comments? All right. Thank you. We appreciate everything you're doing for our students. Thank you so much. Thank you. One last one. This one didn't get to me in time to make the, put her name in the agenda. But I also just wanted to do a quick shout out for our Human Resources Officer, Lee Butler. Lee, I know, she's like, what? You're not supposed to recognize me. But yes, I am. I got a beautiful letter from the Aliceelle School District thanking Ms. Butler for her superintendent search services, just so that everyone knows, when a district is in need of a new superintendent, the options are, they can conduct their own search, which is sometimes very, very difficult. They can reach out to us, and we can conduct that search, or they can hire a search firm. And typically, those search firms cost anywhere like, what, ten, between ten thousand and fifty thousand, maybe even more. And, and when our office conducts that search, I say our office, it's Lee. We just do it for cost. There, we don't make any money. We don't want to make any money. It is a service to our districts. It's to help support them. But it does create tremendous amount of extra work, because all of that happens on top of your regular day job. And so I did, I got this beautiful letter, just commending her for her great work. I won't read the whole letter, but I will pass it down. They were so very grateful for her services. I even had one of the board members personally reach out just to say, oh, my gosh, she's so professional. And I had no idea what to expect. At first, I wasn't sure about this. You know, because sometimes when you get something for no cost or low cost, you get what you pay for. But in this case, you get a really great search, even though you didn't have to pay that much. And so she really gave her commendation to Lee, and then it was followed up from the superintendent and their board, just beautiful commendations. So congratulations, Lee, for a search well done. All right. We are going to move on to our first time certain. It's eight point one, Presentation of Resolution Number Twenty-four, Twenty-five, Thirty-One, Recognizing Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have with us today Executive Director Andrea Monzo, Program Manager Naomi Solanos, Program Coordinator Noel Sierra, and Ginger Pierce, Director of CAPSIE. So all. So much. And we're honoring the Pathways to Safety Program. Do you want to? Yeah, okay. Sorry, gave up too soon on that one. We're presenting, presenting our resolution to the Door to Hope's Pathway to Safety Program. Pathways to Safety began as an early intervention initiative focused on keeping children safe at home and preventing entry into the child welfare system, originally serving only families referred by Monterey County Child Protective Services. Building on its success, Pathways to Safety Two Point O has expanded its reach to address the root causes behind calls to family and children's services, and is now open to community referrals. The program welcomes families meeting new criteria from partner agencies and individuals seeking support. Guided by the belief that access, that access to the right services and resource, sources empowers families to overcome challenges, Pathways to Safety Two Point O strengthens family stability while fostering vital community collaboration. All right. And can I just add one more thing to that? So for those of you who do not know the Pathways to Safety Program beyond what we wrote there, the reason this program is such an amazing program is because so many times, we have families that are really struggling from other things. It's not child abuse, but maybe they're, you know, maybe they're struggling with poverty issues, or things that create challenges for them because of their socioeconomic situation or other things. But it's, it doesn't need to be referred to CPS, right? Because once we refer a family to CPS, they're in the system, and, you know, the case begins. But if a child does not, or a family does not need to be in the system, they just need to be connected to resources, or they need some support that can help them avoid that system, that's the best outcome for everyone, for the students, for the families, and for the general public. Because we don't want to over-refer and then bog down a system that really needs to be there for true abuse cases, when we can actually solve a lot of these issues or support these families in solving their own issues through getting them connected to the right resources. So these amazing people that you see before you today are the folks that make that happen each and every day. And Ginger brought, she shared with us about Pathways to Safety, I want to say, what, a year ago or more, both at our
Children's Council.
Summit, Children's Council, I think also our Homeless and Foster Youth Summit, really trying to change the way or change our approach to addressing issues like this in a much more positive, helpful way. So that's why I asked Ginger to come up as well. I just wanted to thank her for making that connection. And then we really want to thank and acknowledge and recognize the amazing work that Pathways to Safety does.
And I wanted to say, because it was a data point that they just gave me today, though, this is the first quarter, Ms. Noel, there you are, where the community referrals have exceeded the child welfare referrals in the history of Pathways. And so this team's done tons of work to transition that work, and Social Services has done tons of work to be okay with that, right? To let the community just refer. And so I just read your, your data this morning. So, and some of these guys have been here from the very beginning. So they're very awesome.
And I think they want to tell us first, maybe a little bit more about the program or any comments they would like to make.
I'll just be brief. So my name is, I'm the Executive Director for Action Council, Building Healthy Communities, and not Door to Hope, Door is one of our partners. And so just to name that Ginger and really the team at the County Monterey were really critical a couple decades ago now to develop Pathways to Safety with Action Council. And so now, with, you know, building out the communities, becoming one with Action Council, we recognize a crucial role that Pathways plays in really the stability of families and achieving that vision of safe and thriving communities. And so just want to recognize that they play a critical part, that you mentioned, around prevention and really creating a thriving family. And so I'll just let Naomi say a couple words. She's one of the longest-standing employees almost since the beginning, so she can share quickly.
Hi. So I'm Naomi Solanos, and I have been with Pathways for seventeen and a half years now. And it's been just very exciting to see the evolution and progress that Pathways has gone through. Like, as you mentioned, it was only a CPS for a long time, and now we're doing community and guardianship for us. But so the progress is in here for But um, so the progress is in here for our wonderful leadership, but also it's for our wonderful our friends who are actually out in the community doing the work and um connecting the families and I'll let.
And I'm the Door to Hope, I'm Noel Texer, I'm the program coordinator. And I just wanted to bring up the staff because these are the ladies who are the vision behind Pathways to Safety. So our resource specialists, we have Elizabeth Aguirre, Boradia Dominguez, Alexis Villas, Stephanie Robinson, Stephanie Diavasso, and Lily Salinas. And actually Elizabeth, Boradia, and Stephanie have been from the very beginning. Um, so they've been the longstanding Pathways team and they, you know, stuck it out with changes and evolutions in the program, but we're really working hard to help our community and help families and children. And um we thank you for this recognition because the work they do is really what um, you know, makes impact and bettering overall families and children and keeping them safe in their homes. Thank you guys for the recognition. We appreciate it.
Stay up here. I, I Heather's gonna ask for board comments first, but after that, then we're gonna actually present the resolution and get a picture. So don't worry.
You want me to read the resolution first or we?
It's, it's up to you.
You guys want, okay, let me read a little bit of it and then we'll take some board comments. Resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-one, recognizing child abuse prevention month. Whereas the Monterey County Board of Education recognizes April as child abuse prevention month to acknowledge the importance of families, schools, and communities working together to prevent child abuse and to promote the creation of safe, stable, and nurturing environments for all children. And whereas child abuse and neglect remain serious issues affecting every segment of our community and can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects with lasting consequences for victims and commute, and communities must take efforts, make every effort to advocate for policies, programs, and services that protect children and strengthen families. Um, and it goes on for a little bit. Now, therefore, let it be, oops, right under the ribbon. Let it be resolved that the Monterey County Board of Education does hereby adopt resolution number twenty-four, twenty-five, thirty-one to recognize the month of April as child abuse prevention month to highlight the importance of collaborative efforts in preventing child abuse and to affirm its commitment in ensuring that all children, regardless of background, nationality, or circumstance, are safe, supported, and empowered to thrive. Passed and adopted on the twelfth day of March, two thousand twenty-five. So congratulations. Thank you so much.
Just, I, I didn't realize the difference between um what you were talking about where, you know, you get in the system and going, sorry, I can see some of you, but not all of you. And also um trying to just help families. And the difference between that is, strikes me as being so significant. So thank you for explaining that to us, but more importantly, for doing that for the families and, thank you.
Any other comments? Alright.
Take a picture.
Okay. Oh, you know what? I also have these pens for child abuse prevention month. And I have a helper, Calvin. I know, he's listening to his audiobook. Um, Calvin, can I have you do a little job for me? This is my son Calvin. Can I have you pass these out to everybody here? Who's accepting, especially accepting this?
Andrea and Noel or?
Right here.
Are we balanced now?
Is that good?
Do you have three ones?
Squeezing just a little. Okay, there I got you now. Ready? One, two, three. Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you for all that you do. I'm just, once I heard about your program, we're constantly referring to.
I gave like twenty-five, but I can broom. I'll get you some, I promise I'll get you.
We got one more.
It's fine.
They are all done with their. Somebody right there?
Feel free to move up to the front if you could.
Three twenty-five. On the three twenty-five. Yeah, so we're gonna move on to eight point two. West Campus Building Project Update.
He's here, Austin Piaras. Uh, yes, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Are we gonna see it?
Yeah, it just has to turn this camera on. Can you see me? I will go ahead and share screen. See if I can do that. Oh, um, it says I'm not able to share. Is that something that you can turn on, Adam, for me? Okay, you guys able to see my screen here? We see you. You see it? Great. Okay, well, hi, everybody. Thank you for um having me again today. It's been, I think, a couple of months now since we last checked in. And just wanted to give you an update as to what we've been doing and where this um, the professional development center project is at in our timeline. So um, yeah, without further ado, we will um kind of walk through here. So we'll get to the schedule at the end, but what I wanted to kind of quickly let you know is we've been in what's called the design development phase of our project. And so as we work through these, we'll start with schematic design, then move to design development and then construction documents. So schematic design is where we really come up with the, the layout and the look and the images and um and, and sort of the conceptual components of the project. And then once we get into design development, that's when we start to um, kind of really work through the nitty gritty a little bit of that. So we're working with systems, um, we're refining the design, um, we're picking out products and materials. And so a lot of the base files that you've seen before haven't changed too much. So site plan, floor plan, exterior renderings, those are going to be um exhibits that you're familiar with, that you've seen before. Um, but a lot of our work is happening as we're coordinating um with um our engineers and working through the system components. So um, I will keep going through here and of course, feel free to ask me any questions as I'm presenting or at the end as well. This is the site plan that we're looking at and as we've seen before, this is still on track. We're still looking at our new building just north of the Morgantini Building where you currently have a parking lot. And as you move north where we're showing new parking, this is the existing West Campus. So really nothing has, has changed. We're still um moving forward with this concept. And we see a lot of value to bringing this building here on site, um, or in this location on the site. Some of the, the site developments that we have heard recently is um that it seems like there's good opportunities for interim housing offsite, which means we can kind of do this construction all in one phase without necessarily trying to um, you know, keep certain portions active. And what that will do is it will really streamline the construction time and save costs for the project. Next slide, this is our floor plan that we're looking at. Again, you guys have seen this in the past and there's really not a whole lot to, to point out that's changed. This is still our main event space right in the middle, still targeting about five hundred folks for large gatherings. We have our um pre-functional lobby space on the right-hand side and down below here, if you can see my cursor, we still have circulation that kind of wraps around this main core of the building. And as you come through and around, um, this is the ed services here in the bottom. There's shared collaboration room and meeting spaces here in the back. There's a kitchen area, um, ELP in the top corner, and then migrant services up in the top right. And so this is, we're feeling pretty good about this layout at this point. And um things are getting to be, to be uh pretty dialed in. Um, next slide, this is our current exterior rendering um that we're targeting. This was shared with you during the schematic design phase and um I hope you still like it because we are still very much excited about it. There's, you know, some minor updates that we, we're looking at with adjusting some of the signage locations, but the goal is still the same to have this really rich, warm, attractive material that highlights this main special box of your conference space. Um, you know, really transparent, kind of stunning glass entry to host your, your pre-function events, um nice entry landscaping and plaza space, shade element up front, and then um some simple materials that wrap the building such as uh the stone that you see here on the right-hand side. Some of the things that are new that we're currently working on are um developing the interior of this space. So this rendering that you see here is uh an option for um the interior lobby area. We're currently studying materials and um nothing's been finalized yet. But this is, this is one consideration here. So you can get a sense of how this space might work. There's um a, a lot of open, bright space here for a variety of um gatherings and potential locations for art uh to be displayed or large murals on the walls. We're trying to bring in as much daylight as we can in a variety of spaces. And we have this kind of fun corner design here that gives you a peekaboo into the event space if we want it to exist. And also to potentially open this all up with an operable wall. So this could be a sort of indoor, outdoor, free-flowing uh space just for flexibility. Now what you see here is the second version of this. So this is, you know, option one, option two. We're still studying what the final selection would be. There's you know, value to having, you know, the warm material as your main material versus the, the brightness of the stone. But these are kind of some of the things we're working through now. Um, here's another image. This would be from um the north lobby entry as you come in. Uh, again, two options here that we're looking at, kind of option one, option two. And in this option, you can see some of the ways we're studying potential uh display areas uh to break up this lobby space. I'll keep cycling through. Here's another uh image. This would be on the backside. The hallway space that kind of connects um your ELP and your ed services area. Uh, nothing too special, but some of the things we're hoping for are, you know, high-volume ceilings show off some warm um structure up above uh spaces for um you know, art and bringing some color in there and then just really simple professional materials and lighting throughout. Here's a sample image of the main event space. Um, you can see our large light wells. Up here, we're hoping to cloud them in, in a wood material to bring warmth into the space and keep a neutral palette throughout. Um, again, none of these materials have been quite finalized. They're still conceptual. But it gives you a good sense of what the possibilities are. This is an example image of the ed services area and typical of what, you know, what any of the office spaces might look like. High volume, some exposed structure, some um ceiling clouds have been dropped in certain places. Clean lighting, um, simple materials, LVT and carpets to reduce noise and um office spaces that have um some amount of glazing that lets you get peekaboo daylighting that kind of connects through these spaces. Here's another image of that same space in the ed services area, but looking the other direction. Next slide, this is our schedule. This is the same schedule we've been tracking so far and currently we are right here. Kind of midway through the fourth month of two thousand twenty-five. So you can see that we are tracking through design development and getting close to finishing it. Our, I think our scheduled date for a hundred percent of design development is um next week, I want to say the twenty-third. Um, and so, so far, so good. We are staying right on track. Some of our, I guess, our next steps and things we're looking forward to are, once we complete design development, we will have a color and finishes meeting. And that's something where we're going to um meet together in person and hand-select the various materials that we want in this building. And so that will likely occur um in early or mid-May. So at that point, some of these images were looked at where, you know, I mentioned that finishes are not finalized yet. Hopefully for the next update, we will be able to say, yeah, these are the chosen colors and materials. And we'll just continue to um dial in the project. Um, and that wraps it up for me. Any, any questions?
Thank you. Yes. I have a question for you. It might sound a little crazy. But um with the whole project in mind, uh being a new construction, now the committee take consideration of building it with a strong support enough to build up a second story building just in case for the future. We need to expand. We cannot expand at a level up, but maybe we can grow up. So that's my question to you. We, and the reason why I'm asking this question is because being in the high school for trustees, when we, when we built Rancho San Juan High School, uh at the beginning, the whole idea sounds crazy. But we pushed, some of the trustees pushed it and pushed it and pushed it. Then we're able to build up a secondary level on top of Rancho San Juan High School. And um the cost come out not as much as it should have and has, but the building itself become a beautiful. So my question to you is like, since we're here limited, land to expand. Is there any way that we're thinking about building with the infrastructure to support a second building on top of this?
Yeah, so it's a good question. Um, and as we were, I guess, in the preliminary stages of this project, we looked at a second story option and we studied that in depth for quite a while. Uh, there are certainly values to that. But what we ended up doing was landing on the single-story design, particularly for cost purposes. We, we found out that we could hit the program um in a single story and we could save square footage by not including uh stairs and multiple stairs likely, um save cost by not including an elevator. And with the program, the amount of program that we're trying to fit into this building. And with the program, the amount of program that we're trying to fit into this building, we were um really getting close to our budget limit. And so I would say that decision to not have a second floor was uh cost-driven.
Okay, thank you for that answer. My last question to you is that the whole budget looks pretty good, pretty steady and a new building. How old is this? Fifty years old, the whole building or more than fifty?
Wait, this one?
Yes.
Oh, I don't know.
It's about to, you know, it's about to get it going. But what I'd like to see, and I don't see it here on the pictures that you provide us with, a little spot that is cozy for our employees to come and sit out out of the spa, out of the space, you know, with plants and and like a, like a relaxed room, relaxed center, like re- little recreational spot where they can come and dis-stress themselves during lunch. So is that happening?
It is. A- Austin, is there any way you could show that slide of the out, that little area outside of head services, right at the end, right? Yep, sorry. That he has it somewhere else because he has shown it to us before.
Yeah, um, I don't know if I have a good image of it here. I can, I can kind of describe. Let me see if I can do this. Um, give me one moment.
Because it, it does exist while he's trying to find it. Um, right outside of Ed Services, there is like a little outdoor area and I, I'm, we're not sure yet if it's going to be roll-up doors or what kind of doors to go out, but there, yeah, right there where he's, well, not all the way up. I think it's the
Yeah, there's
corner right there is where you have that beautiful outdoor area design.
But yeah, there's a, there's a few spots that I can point out here. So first of all, in the front, you know, this is our main lobby, um, big lobby space, but outside of this lobby, this is all a very large kind of outdoor patio space that will have fixed furniture, shade, plants, um, some really interesting, um, I guess, finished surfaces within here, um, ground cover and concrete and uh various textures. And so all of this will be really readily available and a great space. And then what you're, you're describing, Dr. Gus, is back here. So in this section of the building, we have our collaboration room. So this is really all of our break room back here. There'll be a little kitchenette, um, dining space. And then behind that, there will be a um, a partial wall and shade overhead. And this is going to be an outdoor patio space as well that uh staff has access to at any time.
That looks awesome. The only question that I have to use is between the two, between the two, be- between the spec- the, between the space of the two red lines that you put there. That are gonna part, you know, part that, um, when you're accessing the building to access that private section, uh, the outdoor, there will be a wall, right? A complete stone wall? And then you access to the patio?
Um, kind of. So this is a wall that you see here, and I think this is what you're describing. Um, but within that wall, there'll be a roll-up door section. So you can, you can have this shut down if you want, or we can roll, open that door and have sort of this like free-flow connection that takes you between spaces.
Wouldn't be nice, just the crazy suggestion, wouldn't be nice if instead of being a sealed wall, can we, can we build like a sliding glass doors that would you push away? And you open the whole uh 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 office into connection of the other perios? Have you seen those videos on TV where they move those huge windows? And they're like side doors and they go through the one side.
And in fact, that's kind of what we're doing over here. So where I, where I showed that photo about this section opening up, this is inside your building. We have sort of this glass partition wall that can fold open, um, and you kind of create this nice like combined open space.
I think that would be amazing.
Possible to do something like that. The, the roll-up door is, I guess, like the more economic, economical version of that. Kind of opening up a wall, creating this nice transfer space between the two. Um, if cost allows, that's something we could put in there, but it is, you know, there is a premium price tag to that design feature.
Yeah, I've seen that in another um businesses. Um, and um, when you open this, the whole, the, uh, you open just type of the wall and then would the, 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 the environment that you feel right away is like you're, you're outside, even though you're inside the office, but you're leaving the outside experience. So so to me, it's like something that I don't see here very in Monterey County.
Yeah, yeah, no, those are, those are really great features. And so you will for sure have something similar with this real open door. And we can study if cost, cost allows for, and what you're talking about is kind of like a nano-wall. There's, that's a product that um has those partition accordion folding glass doors.
That's fancier than building the whole, just, you know, the whole wall. Well, thank you. That was a good question. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a quick question. Um, who's selecting the design finishes? Is that, is that PBK that does that selection or is it in conjunction with the, the MCOE or?
So um I hadn't had a chance yet to talk to Mary because she's our chair of the facilities committee. But I, we were hoping that um next month's board meeting, we could have a facilities committee right before the board meeting and um that our facilities committee and the staff members that are gonna live in this space uh will together select those finishing. And then, of course, you know, we'll bring the final of what's being recommended to the full board for the, the final. But that's the goal. Uh, and, and that's really the charge of the facilities committee to make those uh major recommendations.
So uh PBK is making suggestions and then from those suggestions, the planning committee.
The facilities committee makes, makes selections. Excellent. All right, thank you.
Right? Any other?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, uh, Janine was saying meet before the board meeting. I'd just like to make sure we have enough time so we're not rushed because I think it's gonna take a few minutes to actually go through some of those items. So we'd have to be not at eight-thirty because I don't think that gives us enough time. So we either do it earlier or do it on a different day, but we can decide that later.
Or we could do it right after um the May board meeting. Depending, so let me know what your preference is. And, and Austin, since we have you.
Yes.
How long do you think, because we don't yet know how many decisions you're gonna be asking us to make at that meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
You, can we make those decisions in an hour or do we need two hours or what are, what?
Yeah, the way that this has worked well in the past is typically done in an hour. And I would say the first meeting is um wh- what we'll do is we'll come up with a, with a board and sort of two schemes that we would suggest. And all the materials are gonna be loose-laid on that board. And so we can swap materials in and out as we want to. And then once we have, um, I guess, an initial pass at that, we'll take those back, we'll do some renderings and then we can revisit it. And so there might be a second follow-up meeting where we come back and like finalize what those choices are. So that first meeting, though, we can likely do that in an hour.
So then, um, Mary, that works for you, we could schedule that facilities committee meeting at eight o'clock. And then we'll, so Austin was saying he believes that we could do it in one hour. And then if we have to come back, like after they make some changes, then we can make another meeting. So eight o'clock, facilities committee.
On the fourteenth.
On the fourteenth.
Of course, we do it so early. I'm kidding. I'm always saying we need more time.
Unless you want to do it after the meeting, it's just hard before, okay? Because we never know when the meeting's gonna end and that's what makes it hard to set the time.
Thank you, Mary.
Yeah, we're happy to work around your schedule. So if that changes, there's another day that's preferred. You know, just please let me know. We'll be there.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Uh, yes, Virginia. Uh, I'm just concerned about a point that Sanders posed about make, spending this much money for this building and in the future, we find a need of second floor. We, this construction will support a second floor. Um, let's say it's gonna cost us eighty million dollars to, I'm just throwing a number, eighty million dollars to do this building. And when in the future we decide to do the second floor, have to reinforce this building in order to put a second floor in, it's gonna cost another eighty million. So we're gonna spend double money when we can spend probably hundred. You have to do everything for now that we are on the, on the planning of this building because yeah, I think it's important that whatever we are doing, we create a strong foundation because we don't know what's gonna happen in the future. We know everything is growing. We know the idea is that it's gonna be better in more needs of room and spaces of the year. I think we should look into that. I think, take a minute and think about it. Rather spend more money now than double spend. My.
And, yeah, Austin, I don't know if you want to respond to that. Um, he, he alluded to it just a little bit. We did look into like right out of the gate, do we want to build a two-story building? And what Austin showed us, because we didn't realize this, we thought if you had a two-story building, you'd have more square footage, but that's not really the case because you lose um square footage on your bottom floor because of those stairwells and the elevator and those things. And, and your conference center, he was explaining to us that the conference center part is already gonna be really, really tall because you, it has to be high. Yeah, so um it, it didn't really pan out economically because the, the goal would be to get more square footage. But you don't get more square footage trying to do that two-story building. So if in the future there is funding to add more, um, then Austin, you would have to tell us whether or not there would be the ability with what you're building right now to then in the future add a second floor. Because right now, our funding and what we can afford to build, it's not good, like we cannot take on any more debt. The debt that we are taking on is what we can afford and we don't, we don't want to extend ourselves beyond what we know we can pay for. Um, the other thing too, just to always keep in mind is that, well, Colleen, I don't know if you're giving a report at this board meeting, but the R-word continues to come up, meaning recession might be looming, which is going to be a very bad economic downturn. So we also, for that reason, can't like put ourselves in too much more economic, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? We can't get in too much, we can't get more, this is so terrible. The one televised meeting and I can't even say it. We have to live within our budget. That's what I'm trying to say. We can't take on too much risk or we put ourselves um in a bad situation. So, yes, we will look more. And Austin, I don't know if you want to say anymore about that. But we did hash all this out, just so you know, because we had those same thoughts.
Yeah, and, and just to kind of reiterate what I said, that, you know, anything's possible. We could design it to um, support a second floor in the future. Uh, we could build out a shelf for that. We could find space for stairs and elevators and things like that. But it's, there is a dollar value to all of that. And so if we're designing now towards the upper end of our budget, um, and then we want to make that choice to add those upgrades, then likely something would get cut in the short term to offset that. And so maybe that means that we're reducing, you know, program out of this building. Some of these offices we're currently show, showing go away um for the time being. So it's, it's just a priority, um, uh, the district's priority and how you guys want to spend the money.
Oh, I'm sorry, Johnson.
Yeah, I commented a question. Um, if we were to find at some point in time that we needed more space on this campus, there are probably other better options than putting a second story on this building, including um, uh, the Morgan Tini building, or we also have that additional parking lot. This building probably could use some work. But anyway, that's the comment. The question is, though, to the, the point that was brought up, uh, Dr. Gus, have, has your office ever basically done a capacity plan or capacity forecasting to say, okay, in five years, I'm gonna have this mu- much staff and I'm gonna need this much? Um, you know, square footage for that.
So, just so you know, we do that every single year because we have to. And the reality is, is our programs grow and shrink. So this building has, this one has morphed so many times you can't even imagine. Where we currently have G and H, that used to be all offices, that we didn't even have two conference rooms. We only had A and B and all offices. And what has happened over, and you also have to know, when that was the case, the ed services department was this big because there was no funding for ed services team members. The only way we got funding was if you had a contract with a district. And, and what used to happen is if you didn't have enough contracts coming in, they were all laid off every year. Until you got the contracts in, then you, we revoke the layoff notice. That has now changed and our ed services team is much, much bigger than we've ever had. And that's because the state has now put additional requirements on us and they fund it. So our differentiated assistance team has come to be, which now requires more offices. Um, but here's the, here's the interesting piece. We also get grants. The grants might be two years, they might be three years. Once the grant goes away, so do those employees. That's how it works. And so as quickly as we grow, that's how quickly we also shrink. That's what the challenge is. So we're always going to have to morph and change. But right now, with this plan and taking back um some possible spaces that we're leasing right now, um, and we're in that conversation, so probably not for uh public consumption at the moment, but we are also trying to change a current lease, I guess that's the best way to say it, uh, to take back two additional spaces. And then that gives us what we need. If in the future we need more space, we could ask our current tenants that lease from us in our Morgan Tini building um to move out and, and that is in the lease, we just have to give them appropriate notice. So we wouldn't ne- need to build more, we'd need to kick out the tenants if we wanted to do that.
Yep. Very sure. So what you're saying is that the possibility exists about expanding MCOE, right? Not too much upstairs, but because we're leasing some of the buildings. Okay, is we're leasing some of the buildings. I'm assuming we're getting a, you know, monthly, right?
Yep.
Rental. So with that coming in, money coming in, and we would happen to need more space, eventually we're free to just send them out, terminate the lease and expand that other building.
Right. But then we do lose the revenue that comes in. So it's balancing act.
Precisely. But if you lose the revenue that is coming in, it's because there's a necessity to expand.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And so you have to give up and make, so and going back to you about not building upstairs because the square footage should be limited. We're, in this new building, we're housing how many, five hundred people?
In, only in the conference center space. You'll have um the ability to have five hundred people at one time. But the employees that will live in all of those offices, I don't have the total number right off the top of my head, but it's a lot of people. It's all of Ed Services, it's all of migrant, it's all of our early learning program. Now, with that said, um, there's not a nicer way for me to say this, so I'm just gonna say it. We also know that our federal funding, um, we're constantly getting emails these days that those funds could be at risk. If that's the case, and we, and two of the programs that we're moving into that building are federally funded programs. Uh, so if that were the case, then we'd have a lot more offices to utilize if we lose those programs. Now, I don't want anyone, I don't want our team members to be um worrying about that right now or anyone else because that is not our reality of, as of today. I don't even like putting that out in the universe. But, but could our reality change tomorrow or next month? Absolutely. And we're very cognizant of that. And we're very cognizant of that. Also know, this building itself has to morph. To meet whatever the needs are. So you heard me say, we never had G and H before. It was all offices. And then we realized, oh, no, we have to have conference space. So we took out the offices. Put in the conference space. And these spaces are all used like almost all day, every day. That's why we need the additional conference space. But once we have that additional conference space. If we don't have the need anymore for G and H, then we could turn these into offices or whatever the need is at that time. So it's it's more about, how do you repurpose and reimagine our existing spaces? To meet whatever the need is at the time. And that need, it is very difficult to predict. Because we're not like a district. A district, when you look at growth, you're looking at how many housing developments are going to be built in a community. And then that tells you how many schools you need and how many classrooms you need. But in our case. We, it's not about that. It's about, did we get a new grant that brings on five new staff members? When does that grant go away? Because when that grant goes away. Then we don't need those offices anymore, but we might get a new grant. And now the offices may have a different name over the door. Um, and a different purpose because of the, how the grants come and go.
I can, I can feel you by what you're saying that we're limited right now. And we're questionable with the federal funding because what we're going through. So by that point, I'm comfortable. I mean, E N, then you can do something. The reason why. Right now, we cannot build a second-story building is because of the design. Of the construction and the high-sky ceilings, right? Which is the model and the design of the instruction, of the construction. So, which means that in the future, if. For every reason, they want to be in the little tiny room on top, it's not gonna be possible. Because it's gonna cost us more money to remodel, get away and build a second story. So.
Or or maybe you wanna build a second story somewhere else. Maybe, I I don't know about this building. But that conversation has come up with this building multiple times. Why don't we build up on this building? Um, of course, I don't even know how old this building is. We would have to get an architect to come in and look and check the foundation here and.
Well, I think I was thinking, thinking wisely and 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 positive about it and in the future, because we're not solid right now. And you know, there's something to do. And eventually, if the demand for the MCLV can expand, we don't have a choice, regardless of the budget.
And that expansion could also go on other locations that we also own. Remember, we have other schools. Um, and we have other property, uh like the Harvey Cuffner Education Center that we purchased that from the Girl Scout Building. Uh, I mean, those are other possibilities that sometimes are. Um, less cost as well, that can also still meet our needs. So, but I'm glad you brought that up and I'm glad you asked the question because that's where we started with Austin. He can tell you. We were thinking we needed a two-story building for exactly those same reasons. And then once he. Shared with us, everything he shared with us, we were like, oh, okay, makes sense. We get it.
Well, I'm happy for that at least, that at least there's some hopes that with this new building, we can build in the future. Not in the new coming building.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Speak earlier. My question was about making this building strong enough for the future. Without worry about taking space for stairs or elevator or whatever. Just the the foundation is is strong enough in case something in the future can be. Or build a second floor.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you so much, Austin, for joining us today. We appreciate your time.
Yeah, thank you, everybody. Have a great afternoon and we'll see you next time.
All right, thank you. Uh, item number five, unfinished business action items. There are none. We're gonna move on to item number six, new business action items.
Madam President?
Yes.
Did we do the consent agenda?
I believe we did. Okay, thank you. John's gonna keep me on my toes here. Um, item six, uh new business action item six point one. Monterey Bay Charter School Memorandum of Understanding on page thirty-seven of the agenda. And uh, we have Michelle.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board. We've gone through a long process of two charter renewals. In the twenty twenty-four school year into the twenty twenty-five year, which is our full fiscal year. And before you, you have the Monterey Bay Charter School Memorandum of Understanding. Please know that it's gone through legal counsel review. It's gone through uh MCOE staff review. It's gone through. The Legal Council of Monterey Bay Charter. And so there have been those conversations. So all stakeholders involved in this. Mon- memorandum of understanding in front of you has gone through all stakeholders. Eyes and feedback has been given. So. I'll open it up to any questions you might have about this. Um, and and uh be able to facilitate possibly a discussion or clarification or any questions you need.
There any questions from the board?
I just have a comment. Michelle, I've read the material and um. And I'm totally satisfied because whatever the charter school is gonna be implementing. It'll be at a, at a standard level of the curriculum and supervise. Uh, either through their funding, this coming from the L cap money funding. Uh, and but whatever they do, they're responsible for them. If they borrow money, this, they pay them themselves. We have nothing to do for that. And also that um, that we are. You know, eyes on them. Anyone punching us, get out of my, we are just getting cold wings, pretty much. And they do. Everything that it runs, it goes through the side council and well for all. So, you know, with that in mind, uh, yeah, it's pretty well and and informative, this presentation, so.
Any other questions or comments?
Much approved, second to approve.
Call those in favor, say. Seeing none, motion passes. Okay, we're on to six point two, Monterey County Home Charter School Memorandum of Understanding, page sixty-one.
Again, Monterey uh Home Charter School came to for you for a renewal process. They would grant you renewal. For a five-year period and as Monterey Bay, we just approved, we can for just approve. We have a memorandum of understanding before you. I'm sure that when you read both MOUs, you saw that there is a difference in that you are the governing board of Monterey Bay Charter. That the oversight, uh, there are some differences in oversight fee. There are some differences in oversight and governance decisions, policies come through you. And so I'll again, uh, open it up more for any questions, any discussion, any clarification that you may have.
Is staff comfortable and confident? That everything and anything that could be included in this MOU is included to address. The concerns that the board has stated about the need to improve the test scores, particularly the math score.
There are two um items in here that um were taken directly from more, from the boards. From the board's uh recommendations. And if I'm a specific person, I can find that page. I wanna just discuss on page seventy of your board packet. We have the academic reporting, the academic progress reporting, that's on D. And so in there, we listed the three formative assessment periods. So those are the formative assessments that they use. When they, when the students begin the school year, so the beginning of the of the new fiscal year. When the students come in, they're gonna be given the first baseline assessment. What we are, what we have put in here and um believe that it's a reasonable representation. How the students um are doing academically when they arrive to home chart. But the reporting is gonna be brought to you. So um. A sampling would be, we have X number of students that are below basic at proficient, above, whatever it may be. What we're really concerned about is in the winter uh. Formative assessment that'll be given, we bring, they will bring the data to you. The hope is that we've seen some growth in both mathematics and language arts. Uh, to show that whatever the programmatic changes or needs have been addressed with students and families and so that we are seeing academic progress. The last uh formative assessment that they will be bringing to you before we get to state assessment will be the last formative assessment. We hope again, that from the beginning of the year baseline that we took at in in when they came in in the fall. That in fact, from winter to the end of the school year, the third formative assessment will show us even further growth. Now, we'll be seeing that trajectory. If we're not seeing growth, then there's definitely, it's within your purview. To either ask for more, more information as to why we might not be seeing that growth, or hopefully we're commending a school. For for the growth that we are seeing. So in that, we do, staff does feel very confident that it is a standard approach to looking at. Assessment. The formative assessment is not going to tell you exactly. How they will do in the state uh final test, but it's a good indicator because we will see skill sets. That are needed for students to be able to be proficient in uh language arts and mathematics. The second thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is that um. The charter school has been asked to submit to the superintendent, the county superintendent. Um, to her satisfaction, well, this is second paragraph below B. No later than start date of the charter term. The charter school shall submit. Uh, a plan to the superintendent for satisfaction detailing the charter school's. Plan for pupil improvement in mathematics, including an outline of any initiatives and or intervention interventions. That are currently or will be utilized at this, at this school. So that is where you can either expand on that if you felt that. Just math wasn't adequate enough, but it will be the plan of action to. To support what we want to see, what the board wants to see in academic progress. So in those two cases, I believe that that's um. A reflection of some of the input that we got from the board, but I am absolutely open for any input that you might. If you feel that that's not adequate, or if you feel that it is, we can have a conversation about that.
My question was, does staff feel it's adequate?
Uh, MCOE staffs? I, I believe with the conversations we've had with Dr. Gus, with Dr. Porus, with our legal counsel, that this is. Um, sufficient to indicate how the school is doing academically um with students in terms of the reflection of what their. Programs are, what they're doing to support students academically. If in fact, we don't see growth, then that. That is going to be indicated in this, in these, in these tests. So. I believe, yes, over principle, I believe that this is indicative. And also, we will see by the winter um. Assessments, if there is a lack of growth, that there will have to be a re-engagement of interventions.
Okay, um, I was just going to um add that, I think. That this reflected a lot of what we had discussed as a board and I appreciate that and. I, this being my first time through with an MOU for either of the charter schools. You know, we had very different situations in in the two. So it was helpful to have the two side by side to be able to see the differences between the two. And of course, I I was right, looking at your section on the academic progress reporting. The one thing I would love to have added, um, not that I'm an education expert, but. At all, but we were very focused on the math scores because they were so low. With the ELA scores were not that good either. And so my. Recommendation would be that in that second paragraph, instead of it saying. Um, that the plan would include pupil improvement in mathematics only, that we include both mathematics and ELA. Just to have it be all, you know, rounded on the two main areas. And also just because ELA is such a basic part of a student's learning, if you are struggling in ELA. You could be struggling in math, science, history, everything else as well. So that um. Uh, I think that addition is great. I love that we're gonna get these progress reports. It just puts it. Front line. We're, you know, we wanna make sure that those students are getting the best possible. Um, education and that we as the governing board of it really are looking after. So thank you. I don't know if everyone else agrees with that, but that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Um, you asked specifically if staff is comfortable with this and this staff person, as far as the fiscal. Um, the charter school code is silent on the recommended reserve level. And so one of the things that we did in here, based on um statewide information and charter school authorizers. We had a three percent reserve in there and I bumped it up to five percent. So for all of our MOUs now, for charter schools, it's, it now says a five percent reserve is required. And if there is a drop in that reserve below the five percent, then an explanation has to be included and, you know, more discussion happens. So. I um was pleased to be able to add that little bit in into our MOUs.
And can I also answer that question before you get to the next question? Yes, staff is comfortable. Every one of the team members have reviewed this MOU. And we're comfortable with it. But with that said, because we also do have our friends from Babyo Academy here with us today. They're here to learn, like, how do these things work? They wanna get a feel for the county board, what kinds of, what you're looking for, what your questions are. Um, I just, for your benefit, I also want you to understand the difference between the two MOUs. So. Monterey Bay Charter, um, they're an independent charter. So this MOU is so critical for that one because we can only hold them to what the written agreements are. Please know that home charter is a little bit different because it is a dependent charter. I don't care what this MOU says. If they're not performing, we're, you, we all together will hold them accountable. Absolutely, because they are our employees. They are our team members. These are our actual students. So it's this, this is good, but we could ask them to come and do additional reports at any time anyway. So or put additional requirements because they are, they are us. So just wanted to clarify that. Yes.
I'd just like to make a quick comment to um, hearing John and Anna, you know, comments and concerns. Those have been on our table, you know, since last year. And I remember well, because for finishes, you know, of ELA. And so I think that's, that that would be also one of my biggest concern. I respect the staff. I know you're doing whatever you can, maximize. But hopefully, you know, within coming months, you can provide us with an update in regards to. What, how well are they doing now, if there's any changes? I think if we happen to see more changes. In regards to education and increasing their graduation rates, um, it will be fantastic, at least for me. You know, and for the board as well, I can hear that, I can see that. So that will be one of my biggest concerns, just to continue working. In collaboration with the staff and and uh and bring us or send us input how well you're doing. So we don't have to ask many questions because we become true informative of how you well are doing.
Yes, absolutely. So our principal, um, Nadine Dermody, she, she is the. Instructional leader of that school, so she definitely will come and report to the board on a regular basis as to how they're doing. Just a real quick kind of side note, because I know some of our board members are new. My goal is. The oversight lays onto the board. And so essentially, this is my roadmap for oversight. So I ensure that I get all the reports in a timely manner. We ensure that we get all the fiscal reports in a timely manner. And so um. So we will also hold these meetings um as very sacred. And Nadine, the principal, will be the person that will come and share how her students and her staff are doing and what changes they might be.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, this is an action item.
So I'll move for the option.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're on to item six point three, two thousand twenty four, two thousand twenty five single plan for student achievement. So it's for Salinas Community School. That is page eighty one in the agenda, uh, and it's Dr. Ella.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board Members. We bring before you uh the uh single plan for student achievement uh for Salinas Community School, as you'll see the next items. Then are for Wellington Smith and the other sites. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
Any questions or concerns? Can we take these as a, as a group and six, it's six, three and six, four, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, any questions about either six, item six, three or six, four? Okay, it's an action item.
Move to approve.
Okay, it's a move and approve, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, motion passes. Thank you so much. Six, four. Okay, um, item six, five, approval of the board priorities, two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty five action plan, page two hundred and seventeen on the agenda. And that's Dr. Gus.
Yes, so um we did our very best to summarize everything that we heard from you at your board retreat. Uh, we did, we hope we captured everything. Uh, if we missed anything, this is the time to let us know. If we did capture everything correctly, then uh we just need um a motion to approve this plan. Or these priorities, I should say.
Uh, yes.
Yes, comment naturally. Um. In regards to this item, um, I would like to address the board that I've been here less than four years and this year, the way that I, that the board retreat was orchestrated, um, I was happy to be there that morning. But I noticed something that uh for me, the board retreat was okay, but when we step into the board meeting, everything expedite and it went so fast. And in regards, what am I saying therefore, in regards to the Gladio presentation, that is very important, it is for me to to see the implementation, the group, the direction. Uh, it was super fast. And I would like to see if there's any way that um we can schedule like an appointment with Dr. Porus to give us that presentation, maybe on a single trustees or maybe on a on a board trustees. Because to me was like, we gotta wrap it up. It's almost one of our, we gotta wrap it up. And I did not really enjoyed that commingling of of board retreat and board meeting ever seen. For me, it was too much and um I didn't quite learn that much. Uh, the beginning, I get a sense of opening up and sharing, but on the last minute of the presentation, I mean, I just felt like we expedite it so fastly to finish up immediately. And I, I don't feel comfortable with that. I really like to take time to digest what I'm learning from.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
Yeah, I guess I agree to some degree as far as combining board meeting items and the board retreat. Normally, we try to keep it to a very, very minimum. This time, it seemed like we had a lot of discussion about board meeting items. So in the future, I would like for those to be like we used to be, unless it's a necessary or a timely issue, that they not be included on the board retreat agenda. Because we do need more time to have the retreat and feel like it's a retreat and not a board meeting.
Thank you for your comment, Mary. Any other, uh, Virginia?
Um, I thought it was just me, but that's the way I felt that we didn't really take that time to go through every item properly. And we just kinda rushed to get it out of the way. Um, I guess I'm not used to do things that way. So again, um, I thought it was just me, that I'm I'm a new person, I had to adjust to the USP and I looked like I was not the only one. So I suggest on this time that we have too many items on the agenda. Be sure that we take the time properly to make the right decision because otherwise it's, to me, it's like wasting everybody's time.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Can I ask a clarifying question? Um, so there are, it happened last year, happened year before, there are, so for the newer board members, we used to have two meetings a month. And then about six years ago, we combined them, so we cover all business in one meeting. And so what happens with the month when we do the board retreat, we still have those items, there are some items that can only come up at that time. So the, so there's two ways to solve the the concern that's being brought up. We either don't end the retreat at one o'clock and it it just becomes an all day thing so that we can have the board meeting stuff that we have to cover first. And then you can take all the time you want for the retreat part of it. Or you could choose to have two meetings that month, one regular board meeting where we cover all the items that have to be uh covered because we have to meet certain deadlines, yeah, some um legal deadlines. Um, and then have the retreat on a separate day. So my question to the board is, do you and I know this is a year away, but just so we can wrap our brain around it. Uh, and this will help us for planning for that December meeting because remember in December at the annual organizational meeting is when you set your board meeting dates. So that's why I need to know, do you want to have one long marathon date or do you want to separate it and have two meetings, the retreat and a regular board meeting? Hands up.
Okay, I was, I was taking notes. I'm sorry, Mary.
Well, I mean, we've managed to do it in the past because, like I said, we only put timely items on the agenda. It seemed like this time at the retreat, we had items that weren't a timely. From a time standpoint, they had to be done before our next board meeting. So there were items on there that we had a discussion about that didn't have to be on that particular agenda. So I think is
One item.
Yeah, but it took a long time.
Yeah, and it took a long time.
So uh
Doctor, one item was very, had to be done that day, right? The
The policy?
No, the, the
The insurance.
The insurance.
Well, that one didn't take that long. Yep.
Yeah, but that one, yeah.
No, the the conversation that took a long time was that one board policy.
Right.
Um, so that won't happen. Yeah, I, it, we never had to have a board policy conversation at that meeting before, but this time we
That is something to think about. Yeah, I guess we have a little bit of time to think about it.
Yes, Virginia.
Um, I think we'll be better. I'm I'm just thinking from my point of view, if I'm gonna invest half of the day for MCOE meeting, I'd rather assign the whole day just for MCOE and take care of all the business in one day rather than go one day and then schedule another week, another day, another time. It's just a little more, it's like, I'm putting it in my mind, like, it's like I I go out of town for training, one day is just for that. But I would suggest to cover it in a day, so we have enough time to see all the items on the agenda and have plenty of time to make the right decision.
Yeah, I would concur. Um, I think, you know, my experience as somewhat, you know, Mary, this was really the first time that I felt that we had kinda gotten.
Yeah.
You know, and particularly when you're paying for a facilitator, you know, you want the facilitator to facilitate. And there was that kind of that, uh, you know, we kinda got hung up on. But I would uh agree if we, you know, need to schedule until three, you know, just everyone, you know, this is our retreat day. We got business to get done with in the morning and the rest of the, you know, leave it. Leave them, you know, it's a, it's an all day thing.
Any other comments?
Let me come in, but just my wrapping it up. I think um, I was, I was gonna hold it back. My point of view of combination of the board retreat, but I just felt that like I need to address the board and say, hey, we haven't done this in past, this is starting to me. So I'm learning on the board retreat as much as I would like to because of the presentation, of the board meeting. So why in the world we need to combine in two? And now we understand the need because of the lack of time, but just trying to find different ways to just get one thing at a time. I, I don't have a problem with that.
But for anyone who does want more around Gladio, Dr. Porus would be happy to meet with you for as long as you would like, walk you through it, let you play with it. And um if this plan is, if we did capture what your priorities are and you want to do this this way, uh, one of the items that's included in this plan is that you all will help be ambassadors for Gladio. So um I asked our communications officer to make you a packet with everything that you would need. So so you can either have either Dr. Porus or Terry Pimentel or communications officer take the time with you, or you can play with it yourself because this, you have the link, it's all, it's up there. This is all the information and um sometimes just playing with the tool really helps you have that depth of knowledge that you need.
Thank you.
Great.
And and I'm happy to do it either way, you know, whole day or two days, whatever the board, the rest of the board um prefer, if we need to do that.
Also, my next question is um, in page two nineteen, more priorities, um, twenty quarter evaluation plan. Um, it talks about the second paragraph of what you see. Um, post electricity, a bring for all the board members and district leaders. That is one of my, uh, our goal priorities, right?
Yes.
My question is, do we have a discussion of time on when we're gonna have that on board?
Oh, yeah, great question. So um we've already reached out to our those who are best at advocacy to find out what time of the year our legislators are actually in their district, yeah, in town. And um, so we're trying to find that date. Right now, we think that's probably going to be in the fall, but we're, we don't have the date set yet. We're working on it. And um just for the benefit, they all heard the discussion, you all did not. The idea here is that we would invite all of our local legislators to come and have like a legislative, like similar to the chamber legislative breakfast, but this would be an evening, a dinner where all the local legislators can give us updates on anything education related that we need to be aware of and the opportunity to ask them questions or share our concerns or share priorities with the legislators so they know how to best represent us. And that would be for all school board members, district superintendents um throughout. So we're working on it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
So more for adoption.
John, you had a
Nope, I was gonna move.
Okay, move and a second, I'm sorry, Virginia, okay. Um, it's the second, all in favor? Say right?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hey, motion passes. Right, that was, oops, for all we six, five. Okay. So um no unfinished business, non-action items, so item, new business, non-action items, eight point three, Bayview Academy Annual Report to the Board, page two hundred and nine, and that's uh Michelle Archulete.
Well, I'm just here to introduce Rhonda Griffith Harmon. She is our Director of Bayview Academy and she's gonna present her annual board report to you. And just another tidbit which Dr. Gus alluded to earlier, Bayview is coming up for renewal next year, so you'll be seeing quite a bit of Bayview next year, okay? So come on up, Rhonda, thank you.
Good afternoon, board president, our board members, um, our county superintendent. Thank you so much for having us. I'm Rhonda Griffith Harmon and I'm with the record Bayview. I am actually here with my colleague, Parisa Gomez, we also like to call her Parisa, um, our community engagement coordinator. Um, we don't work alone. We are a new team. Um, we've been working together for two years. We're a wonderful collaborative leadership team. Um, we anchor on each other, so we're gonna do this together, okay? Um, again, thank you for the opportunity to present the twenty twenty five annual board report for Bayview Academy. Um, we're extremely proud to share our progress and plans for the for the year ahead. Bayview Academy is a public independent uh paid through eighth grade charter school. Um, of course, we're authorized by MCOE uh since two thousand and eleven. Um, I mean, we're truly committed to building strong, inclusive um communities and empowering our students and our families as lifetime learners and global citizens. Um, I also wanna point out, I'm so grateful for the leadership. We work um negatively with Dr. Stanley, um, with oversight of our budget and all fiscal components with our back office. And Michelle Archulete has been a wonderful, wonderful leader and guys, and the the response that we get. Um, I also want, for those of you who don't know me, um, I formally worked for the Early Learning Program, so I actually rely on everyone, including Adam. Like all of the resources here at MCOE and the wealth of knowledge, knowledge and and leaders. So thank you all for keeping us afloat. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Hello, everyone. It's so nice to be here and actually see you all together in person. Um, we could go on and on about Bayview. We're very proud of our school, but we made ourselves a script so we could keep it nice and short and respect your time. So um I just wanted to get into who we are as Bayview. Um, we currently serve four hundred seventy five students from Monterey Seaside Marina, Hollister, Casterville, Prundale, Salinas. Um, we take a lot of pride in our community. We're very diverse. Um, not just, you know, ethnicity and culture, but even beyond, we um serve a very high population, forty five percent of our students are socioeconomically disadvantaged, underserved, and fifteen percent are English learners and thirteen percent are students with disabilities. Um, these are assets at our school and um we are actually revising our admissions policy for the twenty six, twenty seven um school year um with our charter renewal, hoping to prioritize these underserved populations and social groups. And with that, we are hoping to provide the services and resources that are needed to sustain this population. Um, and on that note, uh, for our special populations, as our own LEA for special education, we operate under the SELPA Sonoma County Charter. And offering, we offer onsite services like OT, stage therapy and counseling, and we do that with some of our partnerships with CSU V. Um, so it's big group effort together. You see everybody on campus working together. We're very proud of our program. Um, we also use our Title I funds for reading support and um very excited that we created a family resource center this year. I welcome all of you to come by and see, it's small, but it's mighty. And we did the MCO or MCOE tour with Donna Smith, and it was just really beautiful to show off our little school and the resource center that we have for our families, um, for our homeless and under-resourced families, as well as families who have just reached out for a little extra help. Um, and also our family resource, resource center offers uh mental health resources uh and housing resources. So MCOE has been my rock personally in making that happen and helping us with providing housing for our families, which is really nice. Um, this is something else that we take a lot of pride in and what you kind of hear Bayview stands for, um, the first word that comes to mind is community, but we don't just use that word loosely. Um, we actually create communities through our thematic units, so uh they integrate social justice, science, humanities and language arts, and these projects are hands-on and often involve service learning. So our students engage with civic leaders, we help them build a sense of purpose and communicate a connection to their community. Um, and what we do is we get all the teachers and the admin and community partners together to create these units. So it's very collaborative. You'll often have like a whole day off for some of the teachers to get together in a room to create a new unit. Um, it empowers the teachers and empowers the coaches and the community partners get to have a voice. Um, actually, today we had a community partner who came in and told us how happy he was from the village project to actually be a part of our curriculum and to be a to actually be a part of our curriculum and to be a part of our planning for the students and what they learn. So that's really nice. And our academic performance, which is very important, um, again, going back to community, the word that we like to use a lot. Academic performance is really what shows what we're doing, right? And so through the testing, which our students are actually doing right now, um, we've just entered the testing realm. Uh, our CAS test, we use CASP and we use the Fanta Simpsonal tools for the reading assessments. Our students are avid readers. Um, every teacher prioritizes reading and the reading assessments. The kids run around with their little papers saying like, I'm a C, I'm a W, I'm a Y. Um, so it's really exciting that we prioritize that. Um, we actually outperform state, state averages in math in ELA, particularly English learners and students with disabilities. Um, so we are constantly tracking that and making sure that, again, going back to the first part of this presentation, our demographics, it's really important for us to make sure that these students who are usually underserved as well, um, are getting this like rich, robust academic experience so that they can feel that they can excel as well.
Thank you.
Parisa gets to talk about all the fun stuff.
Yeah. Um, our fiscal, and again, in collaboration with Dr. Stanley with oversight, uh, we also have a back office. We do use it in an accounting firm that supports us, um, with our fiscal responsibility. And uh, currently our total revenue is, is at seven, um, million, um, five hundred thousand dollars. Um, our expenses again exceeds our total revenue, which is clearly outlined here. Um, this has been quite a challenging year for us. Um, there, of course, we do have an uh, increase in a fund balance um, at just under five hundred thousand dollars, and our fund balance remains stable. Um, we're, we've certainly, we work closely with our finance committee. We do meet once a month with our finance committee. So we are paying a close attention to, um, uh, just being conservative, um, with our budget um, to remain fiscally sound, um, and plan strategically, not only for short term for this year, but for the subsequent years. Um, and we continue to analyze our plans. And so for this year, we've looked at stopping shortages, and again, this isn't unique to just Bayview. All school districts are, you know, advantaged with, disadvantaged with, um, low enrollment. And so we're, we're constantly monitoring, Parisa and I, um, we hit the ground running, we're outdoing marketing. Um, we wear many, many hats, um, not only as the face of the school, but we're also parents. So we, we're, we're really vested, um, in Bayview, but we, our average daily attendance and our enrollments this year again um, continues to, um, pose, pose challenges that we're troubleshooting, um, as a team. I also wanna highlight that, again, with our fiscal challenges, we made, um, we've developed a reduction in force policy this year. We were forced to do that unfortunately. Um, not only did we reduce, um, FTEs, um, some, some staff members who are not classroom um, teachers were reduced from either a full-time position to, you know, a point eight, uh, which is four days a week or three days a week. Um, you know, we basically all took a small decrease in our, in our salaries so that we can keep the school afloat. So we've made really, really big, um, challenges and sacrifices for the school, um, to ensure continuity of our students. But our teachers, our classroom teachers were not. Um, so we just wanna highlight that. And of course, we can, we continue to project, um, a budget deficit, um, for, for this year, but we are working closely. Um, just monitoring those expenses and despite our shortfalls, um, ending the fund balance, um, with the one point five.
And looking ahead, so here's our lower campus and upper campus. Um, we are adding a TK classroom, which is very exciting, some new little learners and providing more access. And I do know that the community is very excited about this. Um, and if you haven't been to Bayview, we're in the heart of Monterey, so it's nice to expand that access. Um, and something else that's very close to our hearts right now, we're very excited to launch is the CYBHI Initiative. The Children's Youth Behavioral Health Initiative, we're looking to expand mental health access in our school. Um, we feel really proud that we have the foundation for it. Um, and everyone seems to be on board and they're welcoming it. I heard that we are doing all the right things and that we're on track, so hopefully by September, we're gonna be one of the first schools that, um, gets the, gets to use the platform and start, um, getting reimbursed for some of the mental health services we already provide. But we're already thinking ahead and connecting with community partners who are excited to get into this work with us.
And I just wanna close, our, adding the additional TK classroom, we were really strategic and intentional, um, with that strategy. That's actually gonna close our budget deficit. Um, you know, numbers is everything, and so, um, you know, having the additional twenty students, um, enrolling twenty additional students will certainly help to close that deficit so that we can continue to operate, um, conservatively, well within our means, but increasing access to our early learners. So we're truly, truly excited about that, that, that expansion, that early learning expansion, um, so that we can continue to thrive in, in our community. And if you haven't heard of Bayview, I just wanna point out the wonderful picture. We do have a lower school that serves our TK through fourth grade population, and an upper school that serves our middle schoolers, those are the cool kids, we call them, the fifth through eighth graders. Um, and it is challenging, um, for us to be on two different campuses, but you know, our rent is pretty reasonable. We do rent via MPUC. But all of these factors, I mean, we're literally like reducing costs in food, um, just food waste and all of the above. So thank you so much for your time. Um, any questions for us?
Questions? John?
So would it be fair to characterize that the budget challenges are related to primarily declining enrollment?
Um, I wanna be honest, quite honest and very transparent. In addition to declining enrollment, there were some grant funding that sunsetted, uh, June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four. And um, we are, we had a previous former board that had over, interim oversight of our school. We made critical decisions and we, you know, we basically absorbed staff members that still were under the grant funding that we no longer have.
We have staff that you now have to find money from someplace else.
Correct. So we basically had, we were, you know, we were at a higher student to teacher ratio. Um, and these were positions that were not classroom teacher positions, such as some coaching positions that we had that, um, really exceeded our capacity. But we've since reduced those FTEs, and for the upcoming twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we're also going to sunset those positions. So we've been very strategically reorganizing and, um, so that we can, we can operate at a reasonable capacity.
But just doing the simple math, uh, what your current annual deficit is, you'll burn through your reserve in about three years.
That is a concern of ours that, you know, obviously we're all losing sleep, but we meet regularly. We spend a lot of time with our board as well. We do work collaboratively with our board and our community organizations, our school site council. So all hands, all stakeholders are part of these discussions so that we can maintain the school. Um, it's a wonderful program. Again, I'm a parent. I went to Bayview so that my daughter can attend Bayview. Um, Parisa has kids. Most of our board members have kids, um, attending this school. And it's, if you haven't seen it, please visit. It's a beautiful community. So we're here to, you know, sustain this school beyond my, my years.
Mary, yes.
Thank you for your report. We're prepared. Thank you for all the accomplishments and achievements you have made within the community. But I do have to ask about the academic performance, because I think it's just so critical and crucial to our students. So the English is seventeen point five points below standard, and then math obviously jumps to forty-two points below standard. And you're doing a lot better than, uh, some of the other schools. However, if somebody asks you the question, what is the underlying reason that your math, uh, performance is lower than you would obviously anticipate or hope for it to be? What would be your answer? And how are your parents responding to some of this?
Very fair question, and again, transparency is what we offer today.
Yeah.
Um, I'll also offer, as a parent, what I'm seeing as well. Um, we've had some turnover with some staff changes. Um, we've had some changes with, like, we've had a curriculum coach for math as well that we brought in with those funds to help um, with the math teachers. So that's been a little bit of a challenge to get everyone kind of on board with the math program. So we're trying to really pin down, um, the strong points of our math program and make sure that we focus on that and keep going with it. And it is related to the ELA portion, so, you know, the language skills to be able to do the math. So we're trying to compare both and see where we're lacking so that we can actually get the students to feel confident in these math skills. Also, intervention. So when you go to a traditional school, there's a little bit more intervention and some more out-of-classroom support, and sometimes in the charter school system, there is a little bit of a challenge of getting that intervention into the classroom or the aides. Um, the aides do come and they support, but it's not always at the level that we want it to be. So it really is us trying to pin down what kind of support we can provide without exhausting the budget. You know what I mean? So it's a juggling act, but the students, they love math, they, they feel confident in the math. We just want it to be a more consistent program so that we can um, really, really see why they dip down, why some students are doing really well and why students aren't. I personally have a child in eighth grade advanced math. Um, and right now she feels that she is doing a lot of it on her own because, um, there's not a separate person to be able to pull out the advanced students to work with them. That's not because we don't want to offer that. It's really because we don't have the funds to be able to offer that extra person. So what our solution to that is that I called up a parent who's like a math professor at Hargill, and she's like, okay, we'll meet with them once a week. Um, so we're trying to do what we can, but I wish that could be more consistent. I wish we could say we always have a math professor from Hargill coming in and helping us with our students.
Are the, most of the math, uh, problems have more text in it, and maybe they used to, so, I mean.
Energy is the, maybe the foundation.
Yeah. Versus just numbers.
Math is different now. It's hard. She, she asked me and I'm like, I don't know how to help you. And I was a math teacher up to sixth grade, and I was like, this is crazy. So.
Yeah, it is different.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. I appreciate your time today. Thank you for coming. We are on to item eight point four, payment of claims for February two thousand twenty-five. Um, Dr. Stanley, do you wanna take I, item eight five at the same time, payment for March, okay?
Thank you. And, and you have two of them this month because this was one of the items that we pulled from our March um, meeting because it was retreat, so we did make an effort to do that. Um, for February, we have our payment claims in the amount of two point one seven seven. Um, and as usual, we can see that we're making good progress on doing our electronic payments. Um, just a couple items to bring to your attention, um, Bart Blade's um, modernization, that was our big expense with the Avila Brothers. You can see that was the four hundred and forty-one thousand. Um, and I did have a question that I received in advance of the meeting, and it was for Paul Kane, doing business as Kane Sound, and that is on page two seventy-one. It was an amount of seven thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. And this was the additional sound equipment that we needed for the Monterey Bay, month, no, sorry, Monterey Plaza Hotel. It was the County Superintendent's, um, Retreat Conference that they had there. So that was an additional expense for, um, baby.
And, uh, the charge to the Sacramento, uh, county office?
So that is in the payment of claims for March, and that one is also, um, two point eight million dollars for March. And, uh, item for Sacramento County Office of Education for twenty-eight thousand dollars was for support for our California Math Science and Computer Science Partnership. And so they had a person there that we contracted with to help support us as we're working on that, um, program and implementing. And that was the only questions.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. On page two sixty-seven. I will say this. Four forty-one, five twenty-four, point ninety-six.
Sandra, can you tell me what the page number is again?
That will be the Atkinson and Anderson, oh, two sixty-seven, two sixty-seven.
You, you did say it. I didn't hear it.
No, sorry, I'm talking to Mary, not to you, Dr. Not to you. The amount is quite a lot, so my, my question is, are they attorneys or what?
Yes, Atkinson, Anderson, Gloria and Ru, Romo. It seemed, that was the six hundred and five.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, six hundred.
This is besides, or, or this is besides the, uh, traditional services that we receive by Luluzano, is another company?
Um, so are you, are you concerned about the six hundred and five dollars and seventy-eight cents?
Yes.
Um, yes, they are in addition to Vazano, and, um, I believe if, I wanna say that our Special Education Department own specifically uses them because they have specific special education attorneys that are, that work really well with us.
Okay. That's my two questions.
Any other questions for Dr. Stanley? Thank you very much, Dr. Stanley. Here on to item eight point six, Report to the Board on Conference Meeting and Workshop Attendance. Page three forty-seven, Dr. Stanley, this is.
Thank you. So this is our third quarter for twenty-four, twenty-five, which shows all the um, conferences and workshops that our folks had an opportunity to attend.
Are there any questions? John?
Yeah, um, following up on the discussion we had at the retreat about board being accountable to the board. Um, I would like to see a page added to this report on a quarterly basis that is just for board activity, what conferences we've signed up for, how much they cost. If we're putting what staff does as part of the public record, we should be putting what we do as part of the public record as well. So that's a request from me.
Okay. So a separate page, not, not co-mingled, but.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Stanley? Um, I have a question for you, Dr. Stanley. Um, the total cost of attendance, does that include, uh, travel and meals, or is it just conference fees and registration?
It includes travel and meals.
Travel. All right. Thank you so much. All right, we are on to eight point seven. Holiday Summary Report from the Summer Progress for April first, two thousand twenty-five through June thirtieth, two thousand, that should be twenty-five, right? No. Oh, wait, sorry. Thank you. Good catch. Okay. Um, instructional materials, deficiencies, emergency or urgent facility conditions, and teacher vacancies and misassignments. Page three fifty-nine, Dr. Miller.
Thank you, President Owen. Uh, just bringing this report, this quarterly report to you, again, happy to report that there's been no um, reports for this period.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments? I'm seeing none. Thank you, Dr. Miller. Eight point eight, Collective Bargaining Sunshine Proposal for the Monterey County Office of Education, to the Monterey County Office of Education Teachers Association for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six. That's page three sixty-three.
Ms. Butler? Yeah, in accordance with head code, we're required to put forth, um, our sunshine items for negotiations for the year. And so these are the items for, uh, MCOE to negotiate with CSCA, CSCA to negotiate with us, uh, along with MCETA as well.
Any questions or concerns for this item? No, thank you very much. Uh, item eight point nine, Collective Bargaining Sunshine Proposal from the Monterey County Office of Education Teachers Association to the Monterey County Office of Education for two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six, page three sixty-five, and the agenda. Butler?
I'm sorry. I was multitasking.
We're on item eight nine.
Okay. Oh, I, I covered that one already.
It's eight, 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 nine. Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for eight?
Thought I was done.
We put you on twice.
So that's for eight, eight through eight, eleven.
Eight through eight. Eight through eight. Oh, you're right. Okay. All right. Are there any questions on any of these agenda items? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Oh. We are on to nine reports from the superintendent, our staff. So nine point one superintendent's report.
I'm gonna just pass down the list of activities, events. Of course, you know, this is not exhaustive. These are just the big ones that just to put on your radar. This doesn't ever happen, but I have to. Just wanted to give you from last report to this report, these are all of the events and major meetings that we have occurred. But now I want to take a few minutes just to share with you some really exciting news. I had the opportunity in Sacramento to share with a couple of you while we're out of training, a copy of our early learning book. But now I get to give you your very own copy of the book. So our early learning program, or sorry, let me rephrase that, not our early learning program. Our childcare planning council through their work with UPK, Universal Pre-Kindergarten. Part of their work is to develop a plan to help encourage all of our would be, could be preschoolers to come to school. And so this beautiful book that you have before you was created by that group. We will be sharing it far and wide across the county. And of particular note, I hope that you see in the illustrations, especially that front cover and throughout the book, it's representative of the entire county. You're going to see from the oceans to the Gonzales Water Tower, to the Three Hats here in Salinas. You will see kids of all shapes, sizes, colors. Yeah, just truly representing our entire county and all of the students that we serve. At toward the back of the book, you also see it gives the student the opportunity to really think about, you know, school and prepare for school. They can draw, they can write. So there's the opportunity for the parents to engage with their littles to help prepare them for school. So we're very, very proud of that. Wanted to share it and give you your own copy. The other thing that I wanted to share with you was while I was at the county superintendent's training earlier last week, I had a great opportunity to hear from Lynn Forkes, who is the author of the book, What Spins the Will: Leadership Lessons From Our Race for Hope. And I share this with you because this gentleman not only shared his book with us, but he shared with us his nonprofit. His story began with his son developing leukemia. And in order to, as you know, if a young person is going through cancer treatments, they cannot be in person when their immune system is weakened. And so for his son, that meant he had to miss a lot of school and he was really missing his classmates and his peers and really feeling unengaged in school because of that. Well, Len Forkes actually is, so Adam, you'll love this, he is the owner of milestone towers. So his expertise is how do you bring in cameras? How do you connect people when they cannot be connected? And this was way before COVID when, you know, we kind of were forced to do that. But what he did was he created a nonprofit called Hope Camp. And what he does is he helps young cancer patients who want to stay engaged with their classmates by providing them the technology that they need and the Hope Camp in the classroom so that even if they have to be at home or at a hospital or wherever they are, they through that Hope Camp can stay connected to their class. And from that, he was in, you know, as you can imagine, that's a very stressful situation to be in when you're, you know, fighting, helping your child fight for their life. To deal with the stress, part of his nonprofit work also is doing very adventurous things like riding his bike across the US or climbing Mount Chastow or whatever the mountain is. And what he does is then he fundraises through these very adventurous challenges to raise the funds to provide these Hope Camps in the classrooms. And so his book about leadership talks about all the things that he's learned through these major adventures. And then, and I'm just pass this down, and then at the back of the book, you'll see just some of the children that he honors through those adventures. So for example, when he's completed that major mountain climb, then he puts out through the technology the young person who's again fighting for their life and who they're honoring that day through that particular adventure. So he's in the back of the book, you're going to see all of the students who he has honored, or I shouldn't say all, but many of them, just to give you the idea. So I wanted to share this nonprofit with you. He's an outstanding speaker. Any of you who get requests from school districts for great keynote speakers, he's a really good one. And I think what his nonprofit is doing, like keeping kids connected even in their most challenging times is very admirable. So I wanted to share that with you and pass down the book. And the other thing that I wanted to mention is your schedule of events. So you have before you all of the possible things that you might want to engage in over the next couple of months. As I say, every month, if you are interested in attending any of these, please do let Cindy know so that she can get you registered. And all the flyers are attached so that you will know all the details of those events. Did I miss anything? Nope. Okay. That concludes my presentation and your calendar events.
Great. Thank you so much. Nine point two staff reports. Nine point two point one early learning program monthly report for January and February two thousand twenty five. Page three seventy one. Need that. Dr. Bella?
I'd be happy to entertain any questions. This is the monthly report that we bring for you.
Okay. And nine point two point two alternative education program annual report to the board, page four oh nine.
We provided an executive summary of the report as well as a PowerPoint presentation. Be happy to answer any questions for you.
Do you want to see the PowerPoint?
Sure.
Why not? Since you put it together.
That's true. While that PowerPoint's coming up, I forgot to mention during my report, just wanted to say thank you to trustee Mendosa for already signing us up for a GLadio presentation. So she has a meeting coming up in June with her neighborhood watch and she has invited us to come and present GLadio. So forgot to mention that.
Well, thank you, President Owen and members of the board, Dr. Gus. We will definitely go through this pro- this presentation for you and I think you are all very well versed on our phenomenal opportunity that we have to serve students in Monterey County through our alternative education program. It's been my pleasure to work directly with the program for the last two years. Prior to that, I supported the senior directors in that role. I would characterize this last year and the last year as a transition year. We were very fortunate to have a senior director, Victoria Sorensen, who came on board for about a year. And then unfortunately, she had a medical, a medical emergency that did not allow her to return. Then we spent some time, again, in my role of directly supporting the program. I can't say enough about the staff and their dedication from our classified team members to our teachers, to our administrators. And all to tell you that the dedication and interest for these students continues. The other way I would characterize this program is that it is a program that brings so many uniqueness. It's often said in all ed that one must be an all ed minded individual to understand the dynamics that happen in this program. These are some of the bullet points that stand out to us in terms of looking back at the year. As I mentioned, the leadership transition. We are, in fact, yesterday, the position closed. We're so excited that here within the next week, we will have interviews. We are hopeful that we will find a candidate out of this round. And it's likely that that person will be in in July first. And so we will look forward to onboarding an individual. And the team and I, as well as Dr. Gus and our HR partners, we're committed to bringing on a board, not only an individual that has the experience necessary to run such a complex program, but that also has the character to continue to lead the program, to innovate, to engage. It is my goal as an assistant superintendent with all of our departments and particularly with all debt to continue to drive the conversation about student achievement. As, as you know, are very well versed on the results, we do want and expect the highest out of our students. We do recognize their demographic. We do recognize their circumstances. Many of our students come to us needing credits, for example, or deficient in their learning. But that is not an excuse. We need to work closely with our students. And so another indication that we are heading in the right direction is that a year ago or in the twenty three, twenty four school year, we completed a federal program review and a WASC accreditation with very minimal findings. We presented some of those results to you in our last annual report. And, and it's definitely a time of transition, as I said. While we aim to stabilize our enrollments, it is always constantly in influx. Now, I can tell you that the post pandemic enrollment of our students has come back to normal. You all remember that during the pandemic and the year afterwards, there weren't as many students being expelled from schools. The students coming into our core schools was also minimal. We're starting to pick up in that realm. And I think you would all agree, and I certainly been vocal of this in our program, that we would hope and have the dream that alternative education would only support those students that need an alternative setting. We don't want students that are expelled. We don't want students that are in locked facilities. So not, we don't say that because we don't like our jobs or we want to be out of business. But certainly, we don't hope to have more incarcerated kids. We don't hope to have more kids that are expelled. But the numbers have picked up quite a bit, at least normalized, I should say. That's again to the pre pandemic numbers that we've had. The new funding has enabled us to expand our services and again, credit to our county office. You know, credit to you all as a board, credit to our teammates, Dr. Gus and Dr. Stanley, who really champion forward a new way that California looks as how they fund alternative education programs. And through the equity multiplier that we are very great recipients of, we have been able to expand learning opportunities. We have been able to bring on board more mental health supports and enrichment activities for our students that then complete the holistic view of education that we have for our students. And so that, that has set us up really to continue to support these students in the very best way that we can. I mentioned a little bit about the enrollments across all of the schools. We're now servicing about four hundred plus students. And this encompasses our adult education program, our California Adult Education Program and our regular adult education program. You may be aware that under our adult program, we service students in the county jail as well as students that exit that system. And we have the continuity of services for those students. That is under the umbrella of our adult education program. We continue to grow and thrive with open door charter that you all authorize that, that we continue to grow in that, in that area. Every year, some, those of you that come to our graduation see that the number of graduates increases this year. This year, we also expect a very healthy graduation cohort out of ODC. We are supporting the students over at the Salinas Community School. Bob Hoover Academy continues to thrive. And then certainly at the two lock facilities, they are encompassed under Wellington Smith Junior, but we have the school at Juvenile Hall and at the Monterey County Youth Center. So in total, we are looking about four hundred enrollments. By the end of this school year, this might increase by another hundred to one hundred and fifty enrollments, knowing that students come and go. The, the highest transciency occurs at Juvenile Hall where students can spend anywhere from a weekend to thirty days with us before then returning to their homeschool or moving on to the youth center. So that is a, a, a location where students come through before they end up in a more permanent situation. You know our demographics. We continue to support a high number of low socioeconomic students. And that is marked by the number of students that qualify for free and reduced lunch. Our, our homeless McKinney Bento student continues to grow. Our spent population has been one on the rise. And in comparing these numbers to county figures, the number of students with IUPs is on the rise generally, and we certainly see the bulk of that with special ed. Our English learner population has stayed relatively the same around forty to forty five percent. To that end, we ensure that we support the students and their learning needs with additional English learner strategy supports. We scaffold our learning. So if there are students that are recent immigrants or still acquiring English language, we have the scaffolding support to support those students. And so here you will see the other statistics with our student demographics. I mentioned a little bit of our program and services. I have to underscore the mental health supports that we've expanded. This last school year, we traditionally had one behavioral therapist with our partnership with Harmony at Home. You all know that, that support. Well, thanks to the equity multiplier, we have been able to bring on a second counselor that now gives full time support at Salinas Community School at Bob Hoover Academy. The students in the core schools are supported by Monterey County Children's Behavioral Health. So the therapists from Children's Behavioral Health come into Juvenile Hall, come into youth service, to the youth center. And then outside of the Salinas Community School, that's where our work with the Harmony at Home comes to play. And now with two full time therapists that come in and provide up all of the supports. Certainly, we can refer students back to Monterey County Children's Behavioral Health with more extreme cases. You're all very aware of Ohana and the services that they provide. They're on our list of referrals should we need a case that can be escalated to that level. We are very proud of the Monterey College of Law and we have exercised their plethora of offerings to the max. More recently, with the Know Your Rights campaigns, in the month of February, we hosted a wonderful and wonderfully turned out virtual session regarding immigration rights. Here within the next couple of weeks, we're planning a second session with Monterey College of Law on how to help families establish an emergency plan. It shall a family have Jenny changes in their circumstance. Making sure that they have a family member or that in their emergency documents at the schools, that they have all of the emergency documentation in place. So Monterey College of Law has been a tremendous partner. This is on top of monthly workshops that they provide at the Salinas Community School in our center that you all tasked us to make sure that we maximize the use of that facility. We have other workshops, believe it or not, the most popular one was how to establish LLCs. There's a lot of individuals out there that are very looking forward to establishing and being business owners. So when the Monterey College of Law came over and did a segment on establishing LLCs, very good turnout. So there are a lot of landscape hopefuls out there, landscape business hopefuls out there. We mentioned Harmony at Home, Turning Point in McCade. You, the board has also had the vision, Dr. Gus in our office, of continuing to offer those post-high school opportunities to our students. I'm glad to report to you all that we have gone forward and are now on the fast track of bringing on board Career Tree, GLadio, a career launch. And we had already been working with Virtual Job Shadow. And so the combination of all of these offerings to give students the post-high school opportunities and exposure has really been a sense of focus. We've also brought on board the server permit. Sometimes we take this for granted, but our students have demonstrated great interest in part-time job with fast food restaurants. Well, to be employee of McDonald's or Burger King or one of the fast food chains, you need a servers permit. And so we've offered that certification through ICEV for our students. And so they'll acquire that and they'll do that, they'll be able to apply then. We've also had great success and a lot of. We've also had great success and a lot of interest on the forklift permit. We have a forklift simulator that gives the students the ability uh without driving the actual forklift, but it's a simulator that we uh train students uh and also give that certification. So we've heard loud and clear from all of you that college and career opportunities, post-high school opportunities are very important. We're not done by any means. Where we could grow is in the work-study realm. Turning Point has established a partnership with a goodwill. And so via goodwill, we are able to uh place our students in, in, and work-study opportunities. We've had about twenty students on average per year participate, but that is definitely our next horizon, where we can give these work-study opportunities to students and earn money as they continue their study. So there is a lot of potential. McCain has been a wonderful partner, and if Dr. Lewis were here, I would thank her for that, because Emiliana Valdez and his team, Adam McCain, has been so wonderful. Uh, next time you're by the Salinas Community School, you will see that we've grown in our robotics program. We, we've grown in our uh digital media program and our music program. Uh, we are getting quite use, in fact, this is a photograph of that area um of that classroom, and our teacher there uh has uh really taken off with the robotics. This has been so popular, so much that there is now discussion of creating a competitive team that will go out and compete. And these are the robot wars, you might have seen them on T V, but it's creating the robots that battle each other. Uh, I just think it's fascinating that there's excitement with breaking what you take months to create. Uh, but anyway, that is the potential and the horizon for all of us. Um, and, and we're very, we're very, very proud of that. Uh, with the curriculum and instruction, um you've all known that we've made now the clear transition over to Ingenuity. Uh, Ingenuity, Ingenuity gives us the best opportunity to offer the, the whole spectrum of needs that our students have. Uh, some come that are sixteen, seventeen-year-olds with freshman-level credits. Some are near, near graduation age, quote unquote, but also have freshman or, or sophomore-level credit. And if you sit in a classroom where you're working either in a hybrid independent study or you're working with that individual's student in an independent study, the teacher has to have access to this entire menu of curriculum because your students can vary that much. So you may be working with a student that has ninth grade level um abilities and needs as you are working with a senior in high-level courses. So uh Ingenuity really gives us that bandwidth and that flexibility to meet the students uh where they are. We are still very curious on working with Google Classroom. Uh, many of the comprehensive high schools have this in place. And Google Classroom really allows the, the teacher and the student remotely to connect with one another, submit assignments, keep a file. The ste- the teachers can drop all of the resource, course readings, all of the documents, supplemental material into the folder that now students can access to enhance their learning. And then, of course, I mentioned ICEV. Um, it was interesting, I, I recently looked up with ICEV, and it just means um uh industrial certification via the television, electronic video. That's exactly the, the literal translation of ICEV. And while some can say that it's antiquated, in places like the jail, for example, the county jail and the locked facilities, using an old-fashioned T V and V H S can sometimes play a good factor because we have limitations with connectivity, right? We don't have the open world wide web just available to our students. And so we do have to rely on some of the old-school tools that we've uh grown to learn. Um, the personalized plans uh continue to be an area of focus. Uh, this year, as I've worked with the staff, we wanna know the student by name and by um test result, essentially. Um, we wanna make sure that those students that are on that cusp of being proficient in the standardized test, that we give them that extra motivation and support so that they can go forward and be successful. And then similarly, with those students that need, that need the most intensive uh of support. Um, as I mentioned, we have extended learning opportunities, we have additional tutoring. Beyond that independent study contract that students sign and that, that we're committed to, the students are available essentially throughout the school day and the school week to support our students. Um, we talked about the, the study skills and time management. This year, uh we also instituted, now it's the Second Annual Rock the Mock uh event. Uh, last year, we wanted to give the soft skills. So we talked a lot to students about the academic preparation that they need to go on into the workforce. But we also need to prepare them with the soft skills on how to interview, how to prepare a resume, how to shake hands, how to look people in the eye, and how to prepare oneself when you are in that interview, when you are seeking that network. And so we've also developed that. Just a few weeks ago, we had the Second Annual Rock the Mock. It, it was also very well turned out. And this year's focus was um how, how do I uh study a job that I'm interested? What, what, what should I know, like studying a job description, for example? Study the organization that I wanna work in, having that background knowledge so that you can see uh more profoundly about the job that you are seeking. So that's what we've done. I've talked a lot about the college and career readiness, the Rock the Mock, um, and all of the services that, that we provided. Uh, we're very excited, uh you know, Bob Hoover continues to innovate and go forward. Uh, that continues with the, the ground school instruction and the flight program. Uh, hopefully, by the end of this year, we have a couple other students that are soloing in that department or in that program. Uh, our partnership with Bob Hoover Academy continues to grow and be strong. Um, and there is well the post-graduation success. We are, are looking forward to establishing some key partnerships that then will create some feeder program to the aviation mechanics. This is that uh program at, is it Cabrillo College over in Gilroy? Is it Cabrillo, or it is, not Cabrillo, it is?
Cabr- uh?
I confuse the aptus.
Aviation Mechanics?
Yes.
Yeah, Cabrillo College.
Cabrillo College in Gilroy. And so there is a natural pathway for us to give the students the exposure. We're not certified to give them um aviation mechanics, but we can certainly give them the exposure, encouraging them then to enroll into a program like the one at Cabrillo College. Um, areas of growth and what we're looking for. I think there's definitely a balance, and Dr. Gus and I have had these discussions. Yes, we're motivated by ensuring that students graduate from our program. We need to make sure that they are accruing the credits necessary for graduation. But we also don't want to put, we don't want to send off ill-prepared students just with a paper that say that they graduated. We wanna make sure that they do have the capacity, the understanding, the, the in uh ability to, to handle uh the post-high school opportunities. So we're making also an effort to ensure that we prepare students academically beyond just simply, did you meet or did you not meet the units uh required? We wanna make sure that their proficiency, their academic proficiency in the realms of math, English Language Arts, and science primarily, that uh they do demonstrate proficiency. And so there's an additional uh emphasis on that. Um, while we are part of the differentiated assistance support, we've also connected closely with our partners here in Ed Services to bring additional support and professional development to our teachers. Um, what's also exciting is that we're building momentum with the community school model. And last year, I would characterize this work as essentially getting all of our ducks in a row, all of the foundation of what does it mean to be uh a community school. I have to admit to you, we are a little behind a challenge that I posed to the staff. My challenge in the fall uh of this last school year was to have a model demonstration of a community school uh all that site by this fall. Um, because of our transition with our senior leadership, uh we, we may or may not meet that deadline, but certainly in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we are, have the expectation that we are going to be a model in one of the aspects of the community school grant. The Family Resource Center has also picked up momentum. Um, we're starting to see more traffic and more parents come through. Certainly, as you can anticipate, that work with parents is really developing a trust. And for parents that have been, quote, disenfranchised from regular schools, it takes additional uh work and additional relationship building with these parents to regain their trust, to have them come into our school site. So that's picking up momentum, and I already talked about the expanded mental health support. So uh this year, we are really looking forward to, at the Salinas Community School, Wellington Smith, having forty graduates. That's the number that are, are on pace as of last Friday. Uh, we hope to have maybe ten to fifteen more. Uh, but when I asked the staff, okay, who's on pace to walk, walk the stage on, on June second? That's the number that they gave me right now, but with maybe ten to fifteen more that are right, um, that are almost there. Same thing with Open Door Charter School. Um, we have the five adult graduates that already came through, and we're gonna have maybe another thirty or so that are gonna be the adult graduate. You may remember, I think it was last year that we had a fifty-three-year-old that graduated from Open Door Charter. I don't think we have someone of that age this year, but the idea is that we are really making a impact in that community. Um, the other great success that I think it's worth mentioning is the rental assistance, assistance and food distribution uh program that we have. Thank you to your support. Uh, Dr. Smith out of our office has continued with the rental assistance. Out of all, and only, we've helped more than thirty, or we've distributed more than thirty thousand dollars in rental assistance. This translates to about twenty families that have received this. Think is that without the support, you have essentially twenty other families that would be um in a substandard housing circumstance or outright homeless. And so we're very proud of that. Now with the um, the support of a nonprofit organization, we're able to carry that forward. Uh, and so we, we are very uh proud of that. And, and this reminds us that as focused as we are with the academics, we have to make sure that we're breaking down any other obstacle that stands in the way of our students, really reaching that self-actualization as Maslov uh taught us, right? And so that is our presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. Uh, but thank you for your support. Uh, alternative education, as you know, is vital for our county office. Um, while we have areas to grow on and areas to improve, the fact that our staff is committed, the staff, the fact that we are student-centered, that is the great foundation for us to continue to go forward. So thank you for your, for your time and attention.
Much. Are there any questions or comments?
Thank you for such a thorough report.
Thank you.
Best program in the state.
I believe so, and I agree with you. We do have, we do have some space to grow, we space to grow. And, and I think, a- and if I can quickly comment on that. When we are so focused on our programs, I think all of you might have, my experience is, when you're so focused on your program, you don't know how good you are, right? And, and, and we're not out there tongue, uh flaunting that we're, we're good. But when you visit other programs, um, we've had the chance to go out to the Fresno Alternative Education Program. I've taken visits to the Shasta up in, in Northern California. And when you see, not, not that they're not doing good work, but when you see uh not only the interest on behalf of our staff, but then the, the, the diverse offerings that we provide, I would agree with you, a certain person, I, I, we are good. And a lot of work to do, a lot of work to do. We're not gonna let that get to our heads, because we, we do have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
Yes, Sandra. A quick recommendation, it's not a question. Uh, but since you've been traveling to one, another, obviously, of education, you know, Oregon, whatever, to come back and bring us that information about how to create the change pilot program into this M C O E. Um, I remember, two years ago, I attended a conference, uh, C F D A. And, and I got a chance to meet the individual who's um kind of a broker into the school district and the company.
Okay.
And that individual was working in collaboration with the L A District. And they were, they were preparing kids, not only to graduate from the high school, but the high school diploma, but to provide them also with a certification in completion of careers, like, you know, then, plumbing, all this stuff. And those kids, they were going to schools, you know, high school, but they were also doing kind of an internship to learn that job. So by the time they finish their high school, whether they want to go off to colleges or not, they have a certification to work. And if that company will hire these kids during the school's years, they'll also earn money.
Yes.
So that is called Amazon and Trade Tools. And I've been saying this one more and one more on this board, that those companies, they were willing to come and do a presentation to you. And help hook up and work, and get those kids to get a certification as a vocational career.
We will look into that, trustee.
So you guys have it, I provided it to you on my school, on my confidence report two years ago. And uh even I talked to uh, uh, Adenin, that they were willing to come into a presentation, you know, to M C O E, to start building that relationship of internship, high school certification. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, we need to get them into that.
Absolutely.
But your presentation is, is well addressed, it covers a lot. But like John mentioned, we need to expand, reach out.
I'm with you.
And I'm so happy to hear that you also are providing, you know, that incentives our students in that school about how to talk, how to sit, how to walk.
Yes.
Because this is what I've, I felt, and we've been lagging big time in our school districts. We teach, you know, we teach subjects, but we don't teach them how to walk and how to read eye to eye, and how to build that trust about being comfortable within themselves. We don't teach that. And that is called self-esteem, community services, self-esteem, but.
Thank you.
I will look for my paperwork, I have them on file probably, and I'll send you the link.
I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee.
Any other questions or comments?
I just, I was gonna add, kind of similar to what Sandra was just saying. Um, I attended a, an A C C B E um online thing, which is the county, the new county board of ed uh group. And as part of their presentation, they had a person from the state of California who's in charge of apprenticeships for the state. And those are, they have to be paid by law. And she was just offering to help any of the county offices to do this. So I'll give this information. Um, this was back in, uh, after our March meeting. But yeah, this is, it was exciting to hear about, and to hear what you, you know, you're saying you wanna expand on the work-study.
Yes.
That's exactly the kind of thing that would help. So, wonderful.
And Janet, you just brought me, and you just brought me to another idea where um, where is it going? Um. I'll, I'll probably send it to you. But yeah, in regards to apprenticeship.
Yes.
That's what I'm talking all about, yes. There was another idea, but it went the other way.
Okay.
So, let's chat with me later. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes.
Did you train the kids uh in how to have their own business? Like, have to write their uh business plan and all that? Kind of, when they have one idea, they, let's say that they have something in the family that they think they can start building as their own business? You have something that you can teach them?
We did have that presentation by the Monterey College of Law that came more on the legal aspects of establishing like a LLC or a business. Um, we've not had a specific workshop for students, but that is something we can explore. Uh, we've talked about, a- and I know career days are, are not the most um depth. Uh, but, but we have talked about business individuals coming in to talk to students depending on their needs. So that, that is something we can plan. Uh, the only exposure we've given students is through this Monterey College of Law workshop, but it was more around, these are the legal.
The legal side.
Steps that you, that you take. But, but I, I like your idea, and it's something I can take back to make sure that, that we can do that.
Well, that's one of the things that I have done in the past, helping uh people to start their own business and writing the, their business pa- plan based on the idea of what they wanna do. So maybe I can share with you a little bit on that.
I love you, please.
Thank you. I just remember my thought.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, partnership, in our board retreat, we were looking for partnership, okay? Or Glado.
Or Glado, yes.
And that would be a good link to get an X points of view and my points of view, and provide that information to Glado.
Perfect. We will, we will look into that. Yes, I, and just quickly on that, um, I, I've met with Dr. Boris because. Perfect. We will look into that. Yes, I and just quickly on that, um I I've met with Dr. Boris because when I say that we have. This spectrum of of resources from Gladio to Virtual Job Shadow, Career Tree and Career Launch. Where we are at right now is figuring out how all of those pieces connect. And and we see, we see a logical sequence because Career Launch is all about these soft skills. Virtual Job Shadow is to give you access and exposure to the careers. And Gladio helps you identify your areas of strength, your areas of interest, and then connecting you to the careers. And then Career Tree illustrates all of that, right? And so we're trying to find the the cohesion, I don't know, the articulation between all of those services. But I'll be working with Dr. Boris and and bringing all of the offerings of Gladio into our department.
Thank you, Dr. Bella.
Okay.
Thank you so much. We were on item ten, comments by board uh by members of the board. Does anybody have any comments?
I have one, yes. Uh Sandra's been talking about Amazon, um will be possible for maybe she can be the connection. For Amazon, people come and give us a presentation on how they can work together with our programs. And then probably give uh have another meeting after with your team. Do not be possible.
With that being agenda, I we have to agendaize that item?
Yeah, yeah, so we can add that.
That will be Amazon and trade tools, right? So that would be great because it's just giving, we've been making the partnership and also making more official, sort of say. Thank you.
Any other comments by board members?
So I have um two comments. One, I attended the Sacramento Governance Workshop. Uh over the weekend and a lot of insights. Um I felt like the most exciting part of the day, though, was when they gave us a chance. To talk to each other and to work together at our tables. And I noticed that the presenters were having a hard time bringing us back. Because we were so excited to be able to talk and share with people, and I'm. I'm gonna leave my feedback to say that perhaps they provide us more time to actually network with each other. And and discuss because a lot of the talking was to us. Instead of allowing, giving us an idea and saying, how you all feel about that, and then having that dialogue. Um the other thing I wanna say is I um attended a tour today and luncheon at Rancho Cielo. Which is the um right here in North Salinas, um on Old Stage Road, and it's a school that's providing a lot of. Different um vocational um options for students. And it was amazing. I, that's the first time I've been inside the facility. Uh my my middle son has attended um cross-country events there, but we never, we were just on the outside of the the. You know, running, running, lots of running, um and we weren't inside any of the buildings or meeting with the students or seeing any of. Um school in progress, but we walked through the um Ag Tech. Building, um they've got a lot of things going on right now with drones, which is really exciting, learning how to work and work on drones, use drones. Um they have a classic car restoration um. Opportunity, there was a mech- uh mechanical garage, like actually fixing your your car that you're driving today. There's welding, they have a construction building, and um they built a small. School competed with colleges um across the, across the United States and even across the world, and they actually won first place. High school students won first place in this competition um against colleges. It was really great. And then they ended the day um at the culinary center where the students. Um prepared lunch for us and served us lunch from the garden that they grew, the food they grew at that. At there at the school, so it was quite an amazing experience this morning. Um so if if any of you have the opportunity to go out and check out Rancho Cielo, I highly recommend. So that was my four comments. Um anybody else have any comments? All right, thank you. We're gonna move on to reports from the board members. Um item eleven, one, legislation, uh John?
Yeah, uh so two things, um Dr. Gus kind of alluded to it. Uh about the uh fiscal climate, um I think I've said this before. What I've heard over and over again at state level is. California is so dependent upon upper income uh taxes that when Wall Street gets cold, California gets pneumonia. The chair of the Fed today had a not very um uplifting. Press conference where he basically, he he of course is very careful, but he said, we may find ourselves in the challenging scenario. In which our dual mandated goals, which is promoting full employment and keeping inflation in check. Our intention, which for him is like saying the sky is falling, so. You know, I I think we we all need to be prepared and need to. We all need to be prepared for significant budget cuts um in the in the coming years. And what that means not only to our programs, but here. You know, both the district, all all the local districts are deficit spending, and you you heard from today that people are deficit spending. And so you're deficit spending in an actually fairly good economic timeframe. Um what's gonna happen when things potentially goes south, so that's number one. Number two, uh I think we've covered before A B two eighteen. So this was passed in nineteen, in two thousand nineteen, and in fact in twenty twenty, significantly expanding the rights of child sexual abuse victims. By extending the statute of limitations for filing claims and allowing for triple damages. You know, I think don't think anybody has any issue with making sure that these individuals uh get the justice that they're seeking. But what it's doing is potentially bankrupting school districts. If you have people coming forward and saying, this happened to me in the late seventies or the early eighties. And there's no one left from the late seventies or the early eighties, and if so, there's no, there's no paper trail, there's no one to interview. There's the the insurance companies are out of business, so these judgments are basically going straight to. Uh to the general fund account for school districts, and when they're, you know, ten, twenty, thirty million dollars. That's a big problem. Um so this is kind of a very, everyone's very sensitive about how to try to approach this. But they also need somebody in the legislature to be uh willing to basically wander out on that limb. Uh and propose legislation that begins to uh address some of the real issues. Uh to try to not bankrupt school districts. At our last C S B A ledge committee meeting, uh they seemed very enthusiastic, very hopeful that they had such an individual. I'm not gonna share who that individual is because that had, that it hasn't come out yet. But if and when that does move forward, we're all going to receive all those alerts from C S B A. Saying, we need you to talk to your your legislators about this, you, they need to understand what we're trying to do, what we're not trying to do. Um it's, you know, uh trial lawyers have a lot of money, um and they are going to make this initiative. Seem really, really bad, um and this is one of the reasons why it's been very, very difficult to find a legislator. Who is willing to walk out on that on that limb. So I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that that meeting was a couple of weeks ago, and this hasn't gone anywhere. But you know, once it, if it does move someplace, that'll be something that will be um come uh uh front and center for everybody. And that's my report.
Thank you, John. Any questions?
I I'm just curious, is that just for school districts?
No, it's it's for municipalities as well.
For, no, no, is the legislation for both.
Um it's it's, it would be for both.
It would be.
Yeah, yeah, because it's, you know, you're talking about, well, I I I guess I shouldn't say that because I haven't seen the legislation.
But the proposal.
Right. C S B A is primarily worried about school districts, yeah.
Right.
Which generally, school districts have less monies than municipalities and counties. So more more when we see.
Interesting. L A County's uh bill for that potentially right now, I think it just came out eight billion.
Yep.
And that's only the first round. That's the first round. So anyway, interesting. Thank you.
All right, eleven point two, Community Human Services.
Um so we had our meeting uh last month, and we'll be meeting again tomorrow. The, as the, you know, some of the stresses on our community have come up. With respect to uh, you know, federal funding and other matters. Um related to that affect our families who are most in need. Community Human Services has really been hit with lots of need in terms of mental health services. The homeless programs are all filled up, so a hundred or so people in Salinas. The two shelters in um the the, on the peninsula are full at over fifty people. It's um, and we're finding that like the food bank is not. It doesn't have a full amount of food anymore, so they can't go to the food banks anymore to get food. So that means our programs are getting hit even more. So just so that we know that as, you know, our representative to that board. The stress is coming on our community, and um and so they're, you know, we're trying to do our best. Their, this year's uh J P A um uh payment for us and for everyone. Is gonna go up by two point seven percent to match the cost of living, but I can tell you that. The budget's tough right now for that agency, but you know, we're doing the best we can, and it's. It's stressful to see what's happening.
Thank you, Annette. Uh eleven point three, Child Abuse Prevention Council. Um we had a meeting on April seventh. We talked about our strategic plan. Uh we approved some. Free meat, car seats and safe sleeping areas. I can't remember, five thousand, three thousand dollars, I think, for that. Um and we talked about the April twenty-fifth breakfast, which is in your. Packet, it's um Friday, April twenty-fifth, the Leadership Breakfast, so if you would like to attend that, please let Cindy know. But the most exciting thing we did is April is uh Child Prevention. Uh Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we released our public um service video for Fentanyl. They should, they did a showing for us, and it was very, very powerful. We used the McCate Center, I believe.
Nico, our video.
Yeah, it's it's top-notch. Um I believe it's on the Capsy. Oh, it'll be at the breakfast. Okay, is it on the website yet, or we haven't, we just had a preview of it, right?
Yeah, I don't think she put it on yet.
Not because, but right, I think she's waiting.
She was premiering for the breakfast.
Yeah, so the premiere will be at the breakfast, so it's phenomenal. If you want to see it, come to the breakfast. Highly recommend. Um doing that, and uh that's, that's all unless I forgot anything. All right, thank you. Um eleven point four, uh Monterey County School Boards Association, Mary.
There's a flyer in your packet that Denise sent out for the Monterey County School Boards Association. Twenty twenty-five annual awards dinner and organizational meeting. It's May first, it starts at five thirty. They'll be performing performances and some special uh presentations, obviously. I think it's girl hands, girl's ink. I think you're getting the award this year. And I did have a question. It says on this flyer, free parking with permit. Does a permit come with your sixty-dollar ticket?
Uh yeah, well, it's free parking that night.
Oh, okay, so that goes in that. Okay, so see you, even your free parking.
All right.
So hopefully we'll get a good attendance.
I might go.
I want to go.
I I think you would be very bored. All right, um thank you.
But don't everybody else listen to that?
Somebody who has the energy of a twelve-year-old. Number twelve, um consideration of future items for future meetings. Um do we have any uh proposed uh resolutions or proposed agenda items? We noted the Amazon agenda item. Any other?
I just had a question. I don't know if it's, when is O A S's charter do that for a presentation?
Oh, I don't know off the top of my head. We are working, behind the scenes, we are working with them, getting very regular updates. But I don't know when they are scheduled to come back.
Okay, staff, give us an update at maybe the next meeting. They don't have to come, but because you probably know as much as they do at this point.
Yeah, in fact, um if you want a summary of our meeting with them right now, what I can.
Well, you can be at the next meeting. Yeah, I want to.
All right, um next meeting date is May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, back at our nine A M. Uh meeting time. Agenda items are due on May second, and with that, our meeting is adjourned. At six twelve P M. Have a good evening, everyone.
And before you leave, we have birthday.